You asked for it.
Good evening. This is the April 11th, 2024 Town of Fishkill Planning Board Meeting, and we'll call the meeting to order at 7:01 PM. Would everyone please stand and join me in the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the republic, for which it stands, and the one nation under God, indivisible, and liberative, and just as for all.
Just a couple of quick announcements. Everyone in the audience, please silence your cellphones, just out of courtesy to everyone else here. And also, please speak into the microphone like I'm trying to do now, so that everyone at home and in the room can hear. Let's see, we've got six voting members tonight and two alternate members present. So, we're missing one regular member, so I'd like to appoint Kevin O'Connell, who's one of our alternate members, as a voting member for tonight's meeting. Thank you, Kevin. And that's filling in for Jody Burka, who indicated she would not be able to attend. All right, well, let's move right into our one public hearing that we have tonight. This will be for the Companion Pet Hospital, 8 U.S. Route 9, amended site development plan and amended special use permit. At 7:00 PM or as soon thereafter as possible, the applicant seeks site development plan approval and special use permit approval. The project is proposed to improve and expand the existing veterinary hospital, which shall include the construction of a 2,212 square foot, one-story expansion to the existing veterinary hospital building. The expansion will be on the building's southeast corner, along with associated site improvements, which will include a parking lot expansion, pedestrian walkways, lighting, landscaping, and replacement of the existing sewage disposal system. And by the way, the current project no longer includes the previously proposed dog training facility. The project site consists of a lot, which is situated partly in the town of Fishkill and partly in the town of Phillips Town in Putnam County. The site consists of 3.76 acres, oh, that's the Putnam County part, and 3.74 acres in the general business zone in the town of Fishkill part. And all the improvements will be located in the town of Fishkill. Okay. So, would someone like to make a motion to open the public hearing?
So moved.
Fred moves it. Is there a second?
Second.
Eliot seconds it. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All in favor. I'm sorry. Any abstentions? So that passes seven to zero. Okay, welcome. Why don't you, as the applicant's representative, just give a very brief overview of the proposal for the benefit of the audience who will be watching this tonight?
Sure. First of all, my name's Eric Rogi with Hudson Land Design, I'm the engineer on the project. Summary you had was pretty comprehensive, but I'll just add some other details as well. The water service will be reused. The one that's there now is going to be reused. We're under one acre disturbance, so we no longer need a stormwater permit or stormwater facilities, so it was good to get under the threshold there. We will also be adding some additional landscaping, as requested at the last meeting, around the building addition on the south side and some screening trees to the north of the proposed dumpster. We still have not heard from the town of Phillips Town. They haven't given us anything in writing saying they don't want to review it. They've told me on the phone, but they haven't given me anything in writing to give to you yet, but I'll get that over as soon as I receive that.
Great.
That's about it.
All right, thank you. Can we see a quick show of hands from people in the audience who would like to speak at tonight's hearing? And if there are some, I will read our rules of conduct for public hearings. All right, so there are a few there. Okay. So first, speakers are asked to come to the podium and identify themselves, so that their name may be entered into the record, although it's not mandatory, but we appreciate it if you do. Speakers are limited to one turn at the microphone and limited to no more than four minutes. There will be a warning when there is one minute left. Speakers should provide only new or different information. Recipitive comments made at prior meetings or in this hearing are discouraged. But speakers are also encouraged to submit comments in writing, and that'll help possibly shorten comments at this meeting. Comments are limited to matters involving the business before the board, that is the particular application under review at tonight's hearing. There should be no verbal interruptions, shouting, or other outbursts or obscene language. And if there are interruptions, and the chair has asked to stop those interruptions, anyone doing that will be asked to leave. So, let's start the hearing. So again, if people could raise their hands, I'll just call you each up individually. Yes, sir. Why don't you come up to the microphone and give us your name and address, please?
My name's Gary Marino, M-A-R-I-N-O.
All right, go right ahead. Yep.
Yep, my name's Gary Marino, and I'm a resident of Carol Lane. Just like to thank the planning board and Companion Hospital owners for hearing our concerns and addressing them. Another issue that I have, which needs to be addressed, is the use of the Carol Lane entrance. The repairs on the road are funded by the residents, and the road maintenance is done by the residents. It's a private road. When we did put material on the road to fix it, we notified Companion if they wanted to help us out with some cost, and we received no response from them. So I would ask, if Companion House was going to be using the entrance, they must pave the entrance way to at least their mailbox or beyond, a bit further due to the excess vehicles and trucks which will be using the entrance. They'll be backing in, cars will be coming in, and I would ask that during the construction period, that no construction vehicles park on Carol Lane at this time. And that's basically all I have to address at this time. So we just want the construction vehicles off the road during construction. The road's not that wide, and we would just like to get freely on and off the road. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Okay, who else would like to, yeah, come on up. Yep.
Good evening. My name is Yehab Elnaccash. It's I-H-A-B. Last name is E-L-N-A-C-C-A-S-H. I'm on 246 Carol Lane. I've also been, I've been living there for 18, 19 years or so. One of my big concerns is just the lighting addition. If you're building this bigger parking lot, you know, nobody wants to have glaring, you know, halogen or LED lights shining through your windows all night, so I'd at least like them aimed away from the houses, like out towards 9 or something like that, because it's already bad enough with the lights that exist. You know, you get them at night and, you know, just overall light pollution. My concern.
All right, thank you very much. Who else would like to come up and speak to this matter tonight? See some negotiation going on in terms of order of speakers. That's fine.
Hi, my name's Michael Beglin. I live at 219 Carol Lane. Me and my family have lived there about three years now. We moved up first. It was nice and quiet, no lights, and that's where we really moved up for that atmosphere, you know? And we didn't know at the time when all the leaves fell, there's lights everywhere behind our house, and we just, we're trying to avoid that in the front of our house now. And that's with this parking lot, you can see the lighting. It's going to be right across the street from us. And I know that they have trees there, but I would like them to be up higher, because when they're downhill, so where our eye level is going to be right at the streetlights, you know, so that's one of our biggest concerns. Also is the traffic that's going to be added with all these people coming in. And we have little kids that get off the bus every day. That's another concern of ours. And that's really it for me.
Does the bus, do the school buses come right into Carol Lane to pick the kids up?
No, it stops on 9.
On Route 9?
Yeah.
Okay. All right, thank you so much. Yes, ma'am, come on up.
I apologize. My husband was supposed to be here tonight, but he had emergency surgery, so I'm trying to figure out everything, and our other person, who's always here, is still in Ireland. He hasn't made it back yet. So, our main concern with the animal hospital is the amount of traffic. Oh, I'm sorry, my name's Michelle Maguire.
Okay.
I'm at 233 Carol Lane. The traffic is horrendous. And again, with the bus stop, and like at 3:30, the bus stops right in front of the entrance of Carol Lane with customers coming in and out, and it's really bad. I don't know, we were just hoping that they could possibly make the entrance on the other side of the hospital, where the open field is, because then they could have their construction company trucks parked there, their worker construction vehicles. They can't be on Carol Lane. It's just, it's a private, we maintain it, we pay all of it ourselves. And just on Tuesday, we purchased legally no parking signs, and they're posted, and their customers are parking in between the signs, where it clearly states, "No parking." This is a private road, no commercial, you know, no parking there. And we took the pictures and we called them, and at first we couldn't get anybody, because they kept putting us on hold, so then we finally got somebody, and they said the customer was coming out to move the vehicle. We're not against an animal hospital. We are animal lovers. It's just that when they close the door at whatever time and go home, we're still there. So, you know, if they're doing construction and the garbage and the wind is blowing, that's all going to end up on our road. And the lighting, the same thing, like they said. And in the town of Fishkill, there's an ordinance, which we're going through with other issues in front of us as well. For construction, it's in the bylaws, and of course, my husband has that information, but at 7:00 AM, there should be no noise before that and no noise after 8:00 PM, because we deal with that with Cranesville right now. And the town of Fishkill Police Department is aware of this, and they've been out numerous times, the building inspector, and we just don't want that issue to be on Carol Lane with whatever construction they're going to be doing, because that's Monday through Saturday, and then Sunday, it's not supposed to be anything, because when everyone else is home enjoying their weekend off, we're going to have to listen to that, and that's not fair. So they have, there's got to be some way for you to make sure that they abide by that, because they don't. They don't contribute to fix our road. We've given them bills and left them with the manager, and nobody gets in touch with us. Nobody answers the, you know, nobody sends a check or whatever, and it's just not fair, because we take it out of our pocket and we maintain it. And like I said, the truck that was parked here, there's the culvert that we just had to dig out from the last storm in March that we got totally flooded, and the truck and its trailer is parked right on the thing again, and we clearly have it posted. So it's just annoying, and there's nobody there to enforce it, and they don't care. And as far as the mailboxes, we're in touch with the post office, thank you, because when a lot of their customers, which we have phone pictures of their customers coming out, because when you have to wait on Route 9, especially when the school bus comes and you got that whole line, the bus actually goes to, past the DOT, goes down the back road and comes back to head down to Cold Spring. You're still sitting there waiting to get out because of the traffic. But while those customers are sitting there, they're helping themselves to our Amazon packages and any other packages, because the mailboxes are right there at the stop sign. So we're in contact with the post office, and they're going to be moving them back to the telephone pole that's adjacent to the street signs that we had posted. But we just feel that if they're not going to, you know, blacktop, do whatever, they should really do the entrance on the other side of their hospital and not on Carol Lane, because, again, the bus stop, the little kids getting out, people trying to zoom in real quick because they see the whole line of cars and they don't want to wait, and here's these little kids walking home, and, you know, they're going to get hit, where they have the field on the other side, and they can make their entrance on the other side, like I said. They can park all their vehicles on the other side, and they're going to have to buy porter potties for their workers or whatever. It should be all put on that side in the open field, not on Carol Lane, where we go home at night to relax and we got to drive by that. So that's all I have right now, because like I said, I'm sorry, I don't have the file that I was supposed to.
Oh, no, that's all.
But, you know, we want you to be aware of these issues. Again, the noise, the lighting, and, you know, any garbage and junk from the workers that work there all day, and when they're done, just throw their coffee cups and go in their cars and go home at night, when we're right there.
And general use of Carol Lane.
Yes, when...
Could I ask a quick question?
Sure.
I'm not sure if you could answer it specifically, but is there any kind of maintenance or use agreement of the private road, Carol Lane?
Just between us, the neighbors. We took it upon ourselves and did it.
But is there, like, an official agreement, or is it like more of a verbal agreement?
It's more of a, we have a meeting, and we all just sit there and, you know, we do it that way, and several of us have the equipment to maintain the road and everything, and we plow it, my husband plows it, and, you know, they don't give us anything. So, and they don't want to, and when we call, the manager's unavailable. Well, where is, I don't know, somewhere in the building. There's only, what, five rooms? I mean, you know, somebody can answer the phone, but they don't want to. But everything for their new building should be put on the other side that has nothing to do with Carol Lane, and our neighbors that have children, God forbid they don't get killed, and that would alleviate that. And it would alleviate the packages being stolen and the mail being taken out of our mailbox, because they're sitting there waiting to pull out, and they have nothing else better to do. So there's the mailboxes at arm's length, and they just open it up, and we've given the pictures to the police department, and they've had, you know, followed up on it. But it's just too much. They should have their own entrance on the field side. There's nothing there. A perfect parking lot. Everything should be on the Phillips Town side, not on our driveway, because there's nobody that's going to come around and check that they're doing what they're supposed to, and it's not fair. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Who else would like to speak to this matter? Come on up.
Hello, I'm Dr. Hope Jankounis. I'm the owner of Companion Pet Hospital.
Okay.
And I have never met any of these people, which is unfortunate, because I did send a letter to all of our neighbors, letting them know what we were planning on doing and inviting them to please speak with me directly, and I gave them my direct number and have heard nothing. So a lot of the complaints, I think, seem reasonable. I would be concerned about lighting. I'd be concerned about traffic jams on Carol Lane as well, and so those are things, of course, that I'm willing to, you know, cooperate with the rest of the community about. But as far as some of the other issues about the general maintenance of Carol Lane, since we've owned the practice, we have contributed to the general maintenance. Most recently, and unfortunately, my husband, who is my partner in the business as well, is not able to attend tonight, and he may know more of the details than I do, but the most recent time that we asked to be part of their conversations and be part of the Carol Lane group, we were told that we were not welcome, and that our money was also not welcome. So it's news to me that they're asking for it now. So I'm happy to talk to any of you guys, and I'm going to direct this to you. Please reach out to me. Don't reach out to my manager, and we can...
Okay.
Yeah, so it's not...
No back and forth conversations, please.
Right, so I'm just going to say, for future concerns, I would love to talk to them individually. I don't see anything about their complaints that is an issue. The only thing that is on their wish list that I don't think that we can do without redesigning the whole plan is creating a new entrance way from Route 9. I believe we had talked about that very, very early on in the planning stages, and that's something that wasn't approved. So that's, I don't think, something we can collaborate on, but everything else that they asked about lighting, traffic, I'm happy to cooperate with the rest of the neighbors.
Okay, thank you. Anyone else like to speak to this matter? Don't see anybody with their hands up. Well, we're not going to close the hearing quite yet. Let me just see if there are any comments or questions from board members, questions either for the applicant or for neighbors. We've heard a number of different issues.
Not at this moment, Mr. Chairman, but I would just also ask that everybody who came to speak and anybody who was out there who wanted to say something that's not here, put it all in writing. Send it to us, okay? Because this way, you may have missed something that you wanted to say, or there may be some other issue that you were thinking about and you forgot to talk about today. Just put it in a letter, send it to us. We read it, we get it, okay? Because all your concerns seem like they're valid concerns, and, you know, we want to make sure that if this project moves forward, that it benefits everybody, right? That, you know, that pet hospitals there, but that the people in Carol Lane are not affected negatively for it, right? So we want to make sure we get the best project possible, but please, give us your concerns in writing also, if you can.
So, I'm just trying to figure out, so like initially, there's the hospital, you know, veterinary office, did they have to get some kind of thing initially to be able to have that as an entrance and a road to your, to their thing, like?
I believe they have a right of way.
Okay.
Yeah, come on up, come on up to the microphone, yeah.
I believe Companion has a right of way to use the entrance. I don't know exactly who authorizes the right of way, because it's a private road, but they have a right of way to use that entrance way.
And then your concerns, like, I don't know if the cop, you should probably report that to the postmaster general, because it's a federal offense.
I know, it was, and I have a picture of him on my phone, I can show you.
I mean, that part of it...
Basically, we want to move the mailboxes because of the volume of traffic that's going to come in to access our mailboxes. That's why we want to move them up a little bit, so we have a better access to our mailboxes.
Thanks.
Okay, thank you.
And then I wanted to ask you a question, like, and you yourself too, that, so if you're doing this project, or you're going to have, like, a construction company coming in and doing stuff, I guess, you know, there are concerns about, and I understand this, about having a job site. I mean, you should be able to have a fenced-in yard or something like that and have everything that, so it's kind of, like you said, you don't have to worry about garbage coming in and all that kind of stuff. I mean, there has to be probably a CM or somebody doing something to properly do the project on the property. So like you said, the guy's got to come in, they got to park into the property, not on the road, because that kind of makes sense.
Yeah, yeah, we would have a staging area on site, and usually, as part of erosion control plan, that it covers trash and site cleanliness as well. We could put a note on the plans that says, you know, no construction parking on the private drive, and we could add, we could add some notes on the plan if that helps. It would help enforce it.
I know, I know, because I deal with it in a couple of different ways. I know sometimes it's not easy for the guys to come to work and not be able to get onto the job, or like sometimes, you know, and it's going to be, I guess it's a temporary thing, so it's not going to be like a 10-year project. It's, but I get it.
No, it's not, it's not a big project. We're not expecting it to take very long.
Any idea how long, approximately?
I don't know, we haven't, we haven't looked into it in detail, but it's, you know, it's not a big parking lot and it's not a big building, so, you know, once the parking lot's in, everything is, will be in the parking area for building construction, so it should be, it should go smoothly once the parking lot is in place.
All right.
I believe you're increasing your parking lot, correct?
Yeah, we have to expand it a bit.
So it'll have much more parking spots.
Yes, so on the drawing that you're looking at, where that, like, white rectangle is, anything to the left is what the current parking lot situation is, so it's just that small area, so everything to the right of that is new construction.
Well, Mr. Chairman, from what I've heard, I think there is an opportunity here for you folks to meet with the neighbors and have some sort of a separate discussion addressing the issues, because you recognize some of those issues, and certainly you have an opportunity to work some of those issues out, lighting, landscaping, with possible, except that the use of private road and so on.
Yes, yeah.
So there's an opportunity here to...
Yeah, so to be honest, I had opened up the floor to that conversation prior to the meeting, because I didn't think that that conversation should happen here on your time, and would love to continue that conversation outside of here.
So I would encourage everybody to kind of maybe get together and have a couple of meetings, I'll say offline, meaning not here tonight, but prior to the next discussion.
Also, I'm hearing a couple of reasons why I don't think the planning board should close the public hearing tonight, but among those, which I was going to raise regardless of what we heard, is that there were several items that we asked the applicant to provide at the March meeting, such as a revised landscaping plan, and then a, basically, a revised architectural drawings that focuses just on the building addition. And the applicant chose not to make a submission for tonight's meeting, and so we actually don't have a project review scheduled for tonight either. But because closing the hearing tonight would trigger certain timeframes within which the board would have to decide on approval of this application under town code requirements, I think it probably would be prudent to keep the public hearing open until May 9th, so I wanted to see what, Dominic, what you thought about that.
It seems advisable, sir. Thank you.
Okay. Well, and so I think if we keep the public hearing open until the May 9th meeting, as some of us on the board have suggested, the neighbors and the applicants and representatives should get together, if possible, before then and try to, you know, figure out some of these details. And I think some of us are particularly interested in and concerned about the use of that private road, and I think it would be good if we can find out a little bit more information and see if there's some way to formalize some of these agreements, so that some of the issues that seem to be cropping up don't continue into the future with the expanded hospital. So, I guess with all that, is there...
No.
...a motion to keep this public hearing on Companion Pet Hospital expansion open and continue the hearing at the May 9th, 2024 meeting, roughly at 7:00 PM?
So moved.
All right.
I second.
Kevin moves it, and Ravi secondes it. Any further discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Any abstentions? Okay, so the public hearing will continue at the May 9th meeting.
Can you be specific in what you want from us in terms of the submission for the next meeting, just so that we can be prepared with what you're looking for?
Yep, I was very clear at the last meeting, and I'll repeat it now. I just happen to have my notes very detailed, so you can hear it. Again, so first, with the enhanced tree and shrub plantings and a revised landscaping plan, we talked about adding some large shrubs on the north and east side of the proposed trash enclosure. We asked for some additional small trees on the east side of the new parking lot, and some small... and some small trees or large shrubs on the south side of the new building addition, just for buffering purposes. And of course, all, all of the new planting should be native, non-invasive species and deer-resistant. And then also, to resubmit a revised architectural plan set with elevations for only the hospital expansion addition, so that we have the proper drawings dated and numbered that we can refer to in our resolutions when we get to those.
And how about the information about the use of Carol Lane? Like, how specific does that agreement need to be? Does that need to be something drawn up by a lawyer? Only because I, I don't want to delay another month and another month.
Well, I think the answer to that, as best I can give, is that it's not clear to the board whether there is or isn't any kind of real formal agreement, and it sounds like it's an informal verbal agreement that the neighbors have set up. And if that's the case, I think maybe we may want to have something, not for the next meeting, but that may be something we would consider conditioning approvals on that could get into things like use and maintenance of Carol Lane, at least as it involves the applicant and the owners of the hospital. You know, that could become a little bit of a complicated question, and it's possible that we may need input from an attorney on your side, conferring with our attorney, but it's certainly not something we can work out today, and probably not before the May meeting either, but I think maybe, and you're getting together with the neighbors, and I would certainly encourage that, that's something that you can all discuss, and then maybe at the May 9th hearing, come back with some information for us on it.
Okay.
Mr. Chair. Mr. Chair, I don't think we should be doing this. That building's been there, and it's been going on for over 50 years, all right? As long as I've been here, Companion has been there, and Carol Lane's been there.
So what is it, you don't think we should be doing?
I don't, I don't think we should be, I don't think we're going to get DOT to put a different driveway.
I did not say that. I did not mention that at all.
But I don't know why we...
We're talking about use of Carol Lane and making sure that the commercial use is not impacting the residential uses.
But it's still, it's an existing use.
It's an expanded use.
But it's existing use.
Well, thank you for your opinion, Fred, but I don't agree with it.
Mr. Chairman, I, I think we should just encourage, rather than asking for a formal agreement, we should encourage these folks to come to a resolution to their own satisfaction on all of these issues that were mentioned today, with the possible exception if they have a right of way off of Carol Lane, of moving that right of way. But all of the other issues, I would encourage them to resolve in a meeting or some sort of an agreement, and you write whatever agreement is satisfactory to you guys. If you can't come to a resolution, then you may have to take some additional actions, but, Mr. Chairman, the lady has her hand up, I don't know.
Yeah, well, why don't you finish your thought?
Well, that, that, that was, rather than us insisting on a particular type of agreement, I would just encourage you to try to resolve it as much as possible yourselves.
And don't misunderstand, understand what I said. I wasn't suggesting that there be a particular kind of agreement. I think what I was looking for is, what kind of agreement is there now? Is there anything in writing? Is it all verbal? If it's verbal, what is it?
I was trying to figure out.
And what are, what are the possibilities of having some kind of a written agreement that, that all of you together could work out, because you're all going to be using Carol Lane? So yes, ma'am, come back up, please.
Mr. Chairman, before she comes up, could we ask Dominic what he thinks about what we just were talking about before?
Yeah, sure. So, you know, this plan that's before the board for Companion Pet Hospital is predicated on the fact that it's being presented that they have a right of way and legal use to use Carol Lane, which they have been using. This is an expansion of their site plan, and the plans show that they have access out to Carol Lane. And whether or not, like, when that occurred has not been provided as far as the plans, like, when the legal right, right, for that right of way, has been provided. So I would encourage Companion Pet to provide, you know, how they have that legal right to access Carol Lane. I think that that's probably an initial thing that should, should be shown. From what I'm hearing, without reviewing anything, but from what I'm hearing is, is that there isn't a formal, what we would consider to be a road maintenance agreement amongst the parties. And it's not atypical, you know, for older private roads, you know, they, they were just private roads. People have the legal right to access them. It's fair and equitable to, for people to share in some costs associated with that. You know, whether or not someone at the beginning of the road has to share in full cost of, say, for instance, plowing or filling potholes further down the road is, is something that's between private parties. It's also advisable, I would say, and I think that the board members, some of you have been touching on this, for the applicant, if at all possible, to work with the neighbors and either formalize or address their concerns. It's no, no question as far as whether or not it's advisable or not. Where I would, in terms of my legal advice to the board, is, is that I think the board's limitation is, is that you have to be careful where you create, like, a condition that says you must now enter into an agreement with other third parties, because it might not be possible to enter into an agreement, and it would prevent, like, the project from overall, from moving forward when the applicant, assuming that they demonstrate that they have a legal right to use Carol Lane, you know, as such. So I think the advice that was given further, or previously, you know, regarding contacting your attorney, providing that information as to, you know, how that right of way was, was granted to this property, and, and also attempting to meet with neighbors.
Can you comment to you about that?
Oh, sorry. Yeah, I'm not sure if it was done.
Perhaps hold that thought, if you would. Thank you, and that's, that's really kind of the scope of my advice.
Okay, to answer your question, the animal hasn't, not been there for 50 years. Back in the 70s, all it was, was a brick block building that an old Italian man made blocks out of. That's all it was. And then when Dr. Orp bought it back in the 80s, that's when he converted it into the hospital that it is. But all of the 70s, because my husband is a 50-year resident there. I'm there 25, 26 years. But it was an old, just block building, it had no doors, it didn't have a garage. The, the old man came in and he just made his blocks, and he sold them, people bought them from him. He was a friend of, like, Harold Lyons's or whatever, and that's where it was like the side thing that he did. He was retired, and that's how that came about. And then, like I said, in the 80s, Dr. Orp bought it, and that's when he added on to the garage that it was, and the entrance was coming in from Carol Lane. But, you know, it's just...
Okay, it was pre-existing.
It's too much, it's...
Thank you.
So do you, you guys?
We're the top, we're the longest one on the road.
No, we're all asking this, but I'm just trying to figure out, like, does the association own Carol Lane? Your, 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 all you guys here?
We all live on Carol Lane, and, you know, we've asked the town, like, could they come in and, you know, help us out? Like, when we had Hurricane Irene and all that, all the water came off the mountain and washed our driveways away up on the hill, and we had to do all that ourselves, we couldn't get any help.
No, no, I understand that, but what I'm saying is, they have a right of way, so they had to get the right of way from somebody, because somebody owns that, whether you guys as an association own houses, somebody has to have a deed or something that owns that road.
The road is located off of the site plan, so it's, it's located off of Companion, and I mean, Carol...
But to come into our road, you have to, like, you come in the road, and then, you know, you have to watch the cars that are coming out, they don't even have a stop sign. Their customers just come right out into Carol Lane, and like I said, you're getting off the bus, and the little kids are walking, and they're jumping, because the cars are going to hit them.
Yep, okay, so we, we've gone over all that so far, so we appreciate.
But I just wanted to correct you, as far as, you know, it was in the 70s, it was just a garage, and then 80s, Dr. Orp had it, and then now that they have it.
Okay, so I think the bottom line here is, and we're, we're going to move on.
Yes.
And thank you for all your comments, but, and we will continue the hearing at the May 9th meeting.
And I just want to let you know that we, we did talk to them, okay? But it just seems like now that they need something from us, now they're rolling through.
All right, no, we're not going to get into those, those issues.
Yeah, but that's, that's all it is.
All right, you're going to have to work those things out amongst yourselves. And we would definitely like it if all parties, the owners, applicants, and the neighbors, come back to the May 9th meeting, which should be both a hearing, and if the requested plan revisions are submitted by the submission date of Wednesday, April 24th, then we also can have a project review later in the meet, and at that meeting, following the public hearing. But I think part of what's going to be really important is for everybody in this room to be able to figure out what the legal use arrangements and if any agreements are, so that we can move forward with figuring out how the expansion of the hospital is going to fit into all that without impacting the residents. That's our goal. Okay, so I think we're done with this item for tonight, and we'll see you all back at the May 9th meeting. Thanks.
Don't you need a motion to extend the date?
We did.
We already did, we already did that motion?
We're continuing the hearing at the May 9th meeting. We had a motion, and it passed, seven to zero.
I almost forgot.
Okay, so next we have a request for extension of approval. Healy Hyundai Lot Line Realignment, welcome.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman.
Let me just read the agenda item. It's, Board is to review the submission made by the applicant's representative on March 15th, 2024, that requests a six-month extension of the resolution of preliminary and conditional final approval adopted by the Board on October 12th, 2023. So, welcome, and just give us a real quick update on why the requested extension is needed.
Good evening, Board. Mr. Chairman, Matt Deister here, representing Healy Hyundai. We currently are still under construction, and even though we have a temporary CO, we're basically waiting to fire up the DOT work, which begins April 22nd. We've got a couple of meetings on site with members of the condo complexes, and, which I think ended very well, working together, so it's, it's, our main item is waiting for our as-built to be finished. They've been on site the last three weeks, going in and collecting all data. So basically, basically, just of completing all tasks to, to be completed, just need a little extra time.
All right. Yeah, you summarized what's been going on there, and, yeah, just, I, I'm sure most of the board is aware of the road widening project for the turning lane that's going on, and some of the questions that were raised by the residents of Fishkill Woods and Fox Ridge Developments across from Healy. So we did have, I think, a really good meeting, what, about a week and a half ago or so, where New York State DOT was there, Mr. Deister was there, a number of town officials were there, and talked for quite a while, and looked at the road right of way, and I think it sounds pretty optimistic that things are going to be, work out, work out pretty well.
Sure, absolutely, with some improvements to the Fox Ridge condo signage and their, their vision out onto the road, as well as Fox Woods, some trees that have to come down, that we've offered for them to go and tag, and will gladly replace, because it's in our construction area, unfortunately. So the DOT did make a request based on safety and Mother Nature in the wintertime to re-strike the road temporarily. That's scheduled for Monday, the 15th, so that'll be, that'll be all good. They did ask us to re-strike the yellow and white lines. The arrows, they said, go ahead and pause on that, only because construction, physical road construction will begin on April 22nd, so lane shifts will occur on a daily occurrence. So instead of getting too confusing with arrows, they just wanted the yellow and white lines freshened up.
Okay. Well, let me just ask Mr. Corderisco if you have any concerns with any legal aspects of the extension.
Absolutely not, sir.
Okay. Any questions from board members?
No.
All right. Okay, then, is there a motion to approve the request for a six-month extension of the resolution of preliminary and conditional final approval for the Healy Hyundai Lot Line Realignment, which would take it through October 12th, 2024?
So moved.
Felix moves it, is there a second?
Second.
Bob seconds it. Any further discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All right, any opposed? Any abstentions? Okay.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. All right, next item is another extension. This is for 415 to 453, US Route 9, Dutchess Mall subdivision and site development plan. Board to review the submission made by the applicant's representative on March 26th, 2024, which requests extensions for the following approvals. First is the resolution of preliminary conditional final approval for the subdivision. Applicants' representatives are requesting two successive 90-day extensions. The Board approved the resolution on February 9th, 2023, and granted two successive 90-day extensions on October 12th, 2023, which will expire May 4th, 2024. And then, secondly, there's the resolution of preliminary and conditional final approval of site development plan. The applicant's representative requests a six-month extension. The Board adopted the resolution on February 9th, 2023, and granted a six-month extension on October 12th, 2023, which will expire also on May 4th, 2024. So it sounds like the idea is to just extend both of those matters to the same date on May 4th. Whoops, sorry, on October 12th. No, all right. Maybe you can clarify this.
Halloween, October 31st, 2024.
Okay. Thank you. So, welcome, and why don't you just go ahead and kind of explain the, the current situation?
Good evening, everyone. Chris Fisher from the Firm of Cudding Fader, here on behalf of Hudson Properties. As you mentioned, Chair, we obtained approvals just over a year ago on the project. This is at the former Dutchess Mall for a 350,000-square-foot warehouse facility. As expected, we're moving through the approval conditions, many of which include review by third-party agencies, most notably DEC, County Department of Health, and New York State DOT. We are making good progress with all those agencies. It's just a typical process where we are. We had actually even some correspondence with DEC today. So we're outstanding, really, on what I would call the discretionary acts at this point. The DEC wetlands permit, there were some comments that went back and forth between County Department of Health and DEC, just in details. So then we're going to be back at Department of Health, trying to finish up our water and sewer approvals. And DOT, I think it's just a question of the work department, I don't think there's anything much outstanding, we're just waiting on that. But we need those in order to be able to come back to you, Chair, and the other conditions, and satisfy those to be able to get a signature. So that's the basis for the request.
Okay. And does it seem like six-month extensions will probably be sufficient to get all those things wrapped up?
I certainly hope so. You know, I think, you know, you probably see it with other projects, you know, a year, year and a half seems to be typical these days for a bigger project for those agencies, so, but I would hope so.
Dominic, any, any questions or concerns about this thing?
I believe that they're entitled to the extension.
Okay. Any questions from board members?
I would just like to see it sooner than later. We've been living with that for a long time.
I think we're all in agreement with that.
If you can move it.
I'm, I'm going to put you on the emails with DEC, DOT.
I would love to be on it with it.
Absolutely. No, we're in agreement, we're, we're moving it forward. And just to, not that you asked this question, and it's not important to the extension, but we still fundamentally believe the market's there. In fact, I think because we were here for an extension, we got a few more phone calls, so there, there's good interest in getting this project done.
Okay. That's what we would like to see. Well, let's do this in two separate motions. So first, is there a motion to approve the request for two successive ninety-day extensions of the resolution of preliminary and conditional final subdivision approval for four fifteen, four fifty-three, US Route nine, extending it to October thirty-one, twenty twenty-four?
I will move it.
Fred moves it, is there a second?
Second.
Anthony seconds it, any further discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? So that one passes seven to zero.
Thank you.
And then, is there a motion to approve the request for a six-month extension of the resolution of preliminary and conditional final site development plan approval for four fifteen, four fifty-three, US Route nine, to October thirty-one, twenty twenty-four?
I'll do it again, sir.
Okay. Brad's got it.
Brad's got it.
I'll second.
Felix seconds it. Any, any further discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? That also passes seven to zero.
I do have a question for you over here. What happened to the tree that was on building, on that? What happened to the tree that was coming through the roof?
I'm not sure what that's in reference to. Blake, do you know what this was? Not sure.
All right. Because it's no longer there, I just don't know if it fell down or collapsed.
Did, did a tree come down recently, is that?
It was inside the building.
Oh.
It must not have been a very significant tree.
I was just, I was just curious.
And maybe if it were large enough, maybe it would have demolished some of the building.
How did you see it if it was inside the building?
Yeah, what were you doing in there, then?
I don't know, I'd see it from the outside. It was growing through the roof. I'm going to find out now. So, thank you very much.
All right, thanks for coming. Okay, the next item, little bit different. This is a request for readoption of approval. This is for sixty-two Greenwood Drive Land Development Permit. Board to review the submission made by the applicant's representative on March twenty-seven, twenty twenty-four, which is a request for readoption of the resolution of approval adopted by the board on April fourteenth, twenty twenty-two. That's a little while ago, and that expired on April fourteenth, twenty twenty-three. Well, welcome back again, Mr. Rogie, and if you could tell us the circumstances about this particular application.
Yes, it's, it's just taken them quite a while to get anything designed or, you know, just to get through any of the conditions. The one, the one big hangup has been trying to get a bond. The banks don't want to give an individual a bond. There's a ten-thousand-dollar stabilization restoration bond that's required before the plans are signed. So they've been having trouble, they were trying with that, and they were trying, and they've been working on the building design, it just dragged on, and they didn't even realize that it had expired. So they're hoping to give it another shot and get through it this time. But we're curious if the bond could be, if, if the resolution could be changed so the bond could be part of the building permit. That way, a contractor could possibly put up that bond if they're doing the, the site work. It would make it a lot easier if a contractor could do the bond. They're, they're used to doing bonds. I don't know if it's possible, but I figured I would, I would check.
And there's no contractor set up at this time?
Not yet.
Any thoughts, Dominic?
I'm sorry, I can't advise that, you know, because, you know, otherwise, all of the other conditions, it, it just, it, it puts the town in a difficult position, you know, because at that point, it, it's just, I'm sorry, I'm not being very articulate, but there's a reason why, you know, conditions have to be met, you know, at the time that site plans are signed. And that's to ensure that everything is ready so that they could start construction at that point.
There are other options, from what I understand, which can range from a letter of credit to a cash deposit in effect.
Correct.
So, I don't know if you've looked into those kinds of options, but.
I'll have to check with them. I know there are, there is another bond on there that is contingent on the building permit, you know. The landscaping one, so there are other ones.
Yeah, that's for, right, after the landscaping is already in.
Right.
Okay.
All right, any questions from board members? How, the other conditions that have more to do with the actual, you know, site construction and conditions, how have those been moving along?
We haven't made progress on many of them. I don't think there was many conditions.
There was a memo from John Boga, that was never satisfied.
I thought we answered all the, the engineering comments.
Well, they haven't been signed off on yet.
They were not submitted for a signature for John, so.
Yeah, yeah.
I mean, for John to review, so.
Okay.
Anyway, so check into that once we get through tonight and just make sure things are moving along.
Yeah, I, I just chime in and say our comments were pretty minor in nature, so.
I think that Pete had done that review at that time. Pete Sataro.
Well, if, if he did, he didn't put anything in the files. And he's no longer with us, so I can't verify that.
Okay. By the way, I just, I was up at the New York Planning Federation Conference in Saratoga Springs the last couple of days, and I saw Pete Sataro up there. He's looking really good.
Yeah, no, he's doing well.
Yeah, I imagine he would be, he's not working.
Well, he's not. I think, I think what he said was, he's working, but only when he wants to.
Twenty hours a week.
All right. So any, any other legal aspects that we should be aware of, Dominic?
No, sir.
Okay. Let's see here. Just mentioning a couple of things. So the original application was referred by the planning board to the town building office, the highway superintendent, town engineer, town planning board attorney, Dutchess County Planning, and Glenham Fire District, so all those things have been done. And the board previously determined the application to be a type-two action under SECA requiring no further environmental review. So, and also, I think in your letter to the board, you indicated that there are no changes in the project since it was last presented to the board. So if that's the case, I don't think that any additional public hearing is going to be necessary to renew this approval. Does that sound right, Dominic?
Yes, sir.
Okay. So if there's a consensus of the board to waive an additional public hearing, just nod, or if there are any objections, if anyone would like to see a new public hearing, let us know now, but I don't see a need for it?
No.
Okay. All right, so it sounds like it would be appropriate to move ahead with authorizing our planning board attorney to draft a resolution, readopting the resolution of approval for the sixty-two Greenwood Drive Land Development Permit for a consideration at the May ninth planning board meeting. Anyone like to make a motion to that effect?
Some more.
Felix moves it. Is there a second? That was Anthony?
Yep.
Any further discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? All right, so, so we will hopefully have that resolution for the May ninth meeting and move ahead with that.
Sounds good.
Okay, thank you. All right. So we have a new submittal. This is the, pardon me if I'm mispronouncing the name, Fantosi Three-Lot Subdivision. Fantosi, thank you. I knew it was one or the other. So the applicant seeks approval to subdivide a two-point-four-nine-six-acre parcel into three lots. The parcel for this proposal is located at sixteen thirteen Route nine D in the R forty zoning district. Lot one would consist of zero-point-nine-two acres and the construction of a new single-family home, thirty-six-hundred square feet. Lot two consists, would consist of one-point-three-three acres and contains an existing single-family home and garage that's proposed to remain. Lot three shall consist of zero-point-two-four acres. Lot three will have no road frontage and is proposed to be offered to the owners of an adjacent parcel for a future lot line realignment approval to improve an existing nonconformity. The adjacent parcel to lot three is located at sixteen-eleven Route nine D and consists of zero-point-five-four acres in the R forty district. So tonight, we are here to refer the application to the town engineer, town planning board attorney, Chelsea Fire District, and the New York State Department of Transportation for review and comment. And the planning board will allow informal comments from the public after discussion of this application. And I understand from our planning office that the applicant has submitted the required application fees and escrow deposit. So I'll just ask the applicant team to give us a quick description of the application.
Good afternoon, Board, thank you. My name is Nick Caesar, this is my business partner Nate, and we're the representative engineers for the project. So this project is an existing lot, which is outlined here. This is the existing lot, and there's an adjacent lot on the rear. We have an updated property survey from twenty-twenty-two that shows a fifteen-foot-wide easement in right-of-way from Route nine through this lot to service the rear lot. So the rear lot in this proposal is actually not being changed in any capacity. Sometime in the previous history, some construction efforts were done by the owner of this lot onto this lot, which is actually owned by the applicant. So there is an existing nonconformity here, and so that's kind of the existing conditions. The lot here is two-point-four acres, and based on the applicable zoning, we think there is availability to subdivide the front of the lot and put a house for the applicant's daughter. So here's just a general overview of the proposed site plan. Based on the code requirements, which state that the required street frontage is twenty-five feet for lots that are less than twice the minimum lot acreage. This lot, after the proposed subdivision would be approved, would result in a lot acreage of fifty-eight thousand, fifty-three square feet. The lot in the front, which would be served via access through the same easement, would be forty thousand square feet in, in accordance with the zoning requirements. And the proposal is to try to make an improvement to an existing nonconformity by subdividing this line here, and then the applicant is gonna, is amenable and the adjacent property owner is amenable to doing a transaction here where this lot would then be combined with this lot. So that's a general overview of the proposal. We had a pre-application meeting in October of twenty-twenty-three, in which some of these things were discussed. I think we have resolved some of the discussion points, particularly the road frontage situation. Our assessment is that a road, a strip here of twenty-five feet would be granted to this property. This property would be accessed via that, or in an unfortunate turn of events, maybe there's an additional road cut here if that's not something that's amenable. And this lot here gets improved from an existing nonconformity, and there's actually no change in any capacity to this lot. So this is a lot that's not changing. It has existing nonconformities, we're making no change to it, so we don't think that there should be any application of a stricter interpretation of the perception of how that lot carries forward. But from our perspective, this proposal is as of right, and that's a general overview. Open to any questions?
The, the lot in the, in the rear, that is not, it's a nonconformity today on that lot, but after that nonconformity is removed, the lot itself is not a billable lot.
There's a house on the lot.
The, the lot that's less than forty thousand square feet in back?
Let me pull up the property survey, and I'll show you.
Kevin, you're asking about the.
The back lot.
The back lot that's like ten thousand square feet.
Right.
Yeah, so the, it would theoretically be in the interim between its, after it being subdivided, before it's combined to the adjacent lot. It would be more of a technicality, that, that could almost be in a, part of the approval of this process that it automatically gets combined to the next lot.
My only question is, you're dividing this into three lots.
Yes.
But that third lot is ten thousand square feet.
Yes.
And you have future plans for that, but that ten thousand square feet is not billable?
Currently, no. But it's in an, in an art, in a larger effort to increase the conformity of the adjacent.
If you just add it on, on, to somebody else, that becomes more than forty thousand square feet, then it's.
Yeah, but the lot back here, this lot, has a house on it, and it's currently.
That's not part of this plan, right?
Yeah, that's not part of it.
It is part of the plan, well, let me, let me.
It's not, it's not directly part of the plan.
Let me, let me suggest that it should become part of this plan, because I was going to comment on that. So if you're simply going to subdivide off lot three, which is ten thousand, six hundred plus or minus square feet, which would have no road frontage and would not meet the minimum lot size requirements, the planning board would not actually be able to allow that piece to be subdivided off without something else happening during the process. It can't be like a future conveyance because then you'd be creating and holding a ten-thousand-acre substandard, no-frontage lot for some period of time. So it really should be part of this application. It should have, you know, the full cooperation and signature of the neighbor for purchasing that piece or whatever the conveyance is going to involve, I don't know, you know, conveyance, purchase, whatever it's going to be. But that should then be proposed as part of the subdivision, as a lot merger or consolidation with that neighboring lot.
So our objective is primarily focused on the subdivision in the front, and our secondary objective is improving a nonconformity in the back. So if the, if the subdivision in the front is in any way impeded by the subdivision in the back, then we're just going to remove it. If we can add a valuable transaction as a conditional item or as a, you know, subsequent transaction, we can do that. I think the neighbor is amenable to that. But if the planning board is resistant in any capacity to this, you know, precluding this, then we're just going to remove it completely. We think it's, we think it's in the best interest of the situation because it's a little sticky.
Yeah.
But, do you have any comments about that? You think that's something we can get going, or?
Speaking with the neighbor?
Yeah.
Well, it's much easier than it to make what you want to do, the three subdivisions, if you do combine it. If you don't, we're not going to approve it as you present it now.
That's fine.
Yeah, I mean, the, the other option is, as you suggested, is that ta, totally take that ten-thousand-square-foot lot out of the equation and do the lot line reconfiguration at some point in the future, but that just means coming back to the board, filing a new application, all that stuff.
So we can discuss that offline and figure out the best strategy, but this is the overarching intent, so you understand.
So, why don't you come up to the podium if you want to add something?
How you doing? Thanks, sir. You don't hear me. So the lot line realignment, we attempted that years ago, and at that time, we were told that the Fishkill didn't have an easy way of doing that, right? Is there an easy way to do that now? Just, I'm just curious.
There are two easy ways of doing it, and the easiest one right now, because you're here with a subdivision proposal that shows that lot, that could be merged, consolidated with that neighbor's parcel if that neighbor is. with that neighbor's parcel, if that neighbor is part of this application in terms of signing on to it and saying, yes, I'm going to purchase it, and it's gonna happen all simultaneously with the subdivision.
Right.
In other words, once the subdivision is filed, it would immediately be also filed with the county clerk's office for the merger consolidation with that neighboring lot.
If that doesn't, if that doesn't make this more sticky, then we can do that. I don't think it's very complicated.
Yeah, and...
But if at any point it becomes a very sticky situation, we're just gonna take it off.
Yeah, so for now, I'd suggest keeping it that way, but also working on the application. We have not referred this matter to our attorney or engineer at this point, and that's what we'll be doing tonight, so we can't really ask for their input tonight, because they haven't looked at the application.
We do have a question, John. Depending on how this goes, I'm gonna need a revised application if they're gonna change this to a nine.
I'd say an amended application, which should, I don't think should hold things up, but if they can get it in, in time for the submittal date for the next meeting...
That's fine.
Which is, the next meeting is May 9th, and the submittal date was, what is that again?
April 24th, Wednesday.
April 24th. I mean, so there, there is now also a new expedited procedure for lot line realignments, just for your knowledge and use in the future. But again, since you're before the board, and if things went smoothly, and if, once our engineer and attorney review this application, and they find that the, there's a willing neighbor to acquire and consolidate that 10,000-square-foot lot as part of this process, that would be actually the more expeditious and easier way to do it at this point.
Okay, question. So just to get clarity, my name is Nathana Gooden, and I'm a principal with the C P L Engineering as well, so I'm working with the applicant. So just to get clarity on this, right? As the plan stands right now presented to you, if his neighbor signed up and has some sort of agreement to acquire the lot or do the adjustment, this plan as it's submitted would then be approvable? But if not, we could strike it off, and then we would have to revise our application?
Yeah, and I, I think you won't, you won't know that until we get, you know, more specific input from our engineer and attorney at next month's meeting, but at that point, we could address that.
Okay.
But it, it wouldn't hurt to put things in line to have the neighbor sign on to this application, simply would be an amended application. There would be probably a brief redscription of the proposal instead of a future lot realignment that is undefined in terms of when or how that would work, to be a merger or consolidation of that small 10,000-square-foot lot with the neighboring parcel as part of this process.
Okay, um, quick question, just 'cause this is probably atypical of the standard application procedure. Can we, can we, can we just submit an application? Because this application we submitted already has the gentleman's name on it that owns this one property. Can we submit a second one with the other person's name with a cover letter that summarizes the intent?
It's not a normal customer practice. I'll leave that to you. Usually, I think they're together.
I would, I would say it, it could just be an amended application form.
That's what I'm thinking.
Yeah.
So that's my question. What is it, what is it?
So see, see Debbie for details on how that would work, but I don't see that as being a problem.
Okay. Is there an amended form?
No.
So there's not an amended form?
But it will become one when we use it that way.
So basically, we gotta get the original back, would you tell me? Is that what we gotta do?
I'm gonna have to think about that. I've run across this before. We've never had one like this before.
So that's what I'm asking, so we can submit it by...
Yeah, so let's not spend time tonight, because we don't know the answer.
That's fine. I'll give you call.
So all we're gonna do tonight is refer this application to a number of parties, including our attorney and engineer, and the fire district, and all those good people.
Mr. Chair, I have a question. Over here.
Where, where are we?
Fred.
Oh, Fred.
I'm gonna be talking into the mic, too.
Yeah. It was, it sounded like it was coming from over that way.
Um, the house in the back, is this the same driveway?
Yes.
Okay.
So that actually raised another question that I was going to bring up later, which is, so there's an easement that provides access to the back house, the house that's existing now.
But it's only a 15-foot easement.
So we would need to see what that easement is about. In other words, if there is a, you know, a filed written easement, we would need to see that.
Yeah, we have it on the survey. It's filed. We can, we can deliberately show you that, but it is, we have it surveyed, and there's a 15-foot easement and a right-of-way.
All right, but is there a written, you know, filed easement that, that affects that?
I would assume so, if the surveyor put it on the survey.
Yeah, so that's what, that's what I'm saying.
Yeah, we can validate it. Yeah, we can validate that for you.
Yeah, we need to have that submitted. And so also another clarification on the driveway that's there now. So the anticipation is that that existing gravel driveway, I guess, as it's shown on the, on the plan, that that would be able to serve the new house that's going on the new lot in the front of the property?
Yes, so basically, nothing would change from the existing condition, because the person that would be moving to the new house lives at the house in the middle. So there's no additional number of anything.
Yeah, but someday you're gonna sell it.
Yeah.
What's that?
Someday it might get sold.
Okay.
And we're concerned about future, too.
Yes, I understand that.
Right, exactly.
So in order to demonstrate that, you know, there wouldn't be a significant impact to any of the, you know, future homeowners, I mean, the plan has a, has a driveway, I mean, you would come in from this way and park at a parking spot, so I can't imagine there would be a significant impedance. If that becomes a very major impedance, we can see about a driveway cut-in, but obviously the most logical way to proceed without pursuing a driveway cut-off of 9D would be to use the existing easement.
We could one off 9D.
Right. Yeah, and I, I, being that Route 9D, especially in that particular location right near Castle Point Road, which is a terrible intersection now, I don't, I don't think DOT would want to see another driveway added to that area.
Yeah, we could even take an additional measure to widen the road. I think now it's a 15-foot gravel path. It could be a 24-foot gravel path, because it's a 25-foot, you know...
Fire department may want that anyway.
Yeah, you may find that, that you run into some breaks when you're trying to feed three different independent properties.
Yeah, we have space...
For the 25-foot driveway.
Yeah, we have space for a 25-foot driveway, which would be a two-lane road, which is sufficient for any commercial vehicle. So I mean, that's something that we could pursue if that is a general consideration about just constricted access.
So that's something that our engineer, John Bodendorf, with C P L Engineers, will take a look at when we do ultimately refer it to them. So we'll be looking forward to some of your input on those things. All right, um, so we talked about the easement. So that, the easement language will be kind of important, because if there's gonna be a new third lot, a new house using that easement, there will probably have to be some modifications to that easement as well. And that's something that we'll need some review and legal expertise on. Okay, so I guess the, you know, another thing that I think, John, you'll be able to take a look at is the actual condition of that existing common driveway, and, you know, again, it's, I, I drove up there today, and I took a quick look at it. Not sure how I would categorize the condition of it, but it's a little bit rough.
The driveway?
A, a little bit. I mean, I'm saying, it's, it's certainly not a paved driveway, and I, probably you don't, probably you don't wanna pave it, but, um, you know, again, that's something we'll have to have our engineer take a look at and see, see with additional use of it, what that'll mean.
Certainly.
Well, since we're talking about attorney and engineering review, just seeing what you're seeing, any questions so far from either John? Why don't you start?
No, I mean, I, I think the, the obvious issues have, have been discussed, and it sounds like there's different ways to address those, so, um, I don't, you know, everything else looks like it's pretty cut and dry, so, um, you know, the, the easement for the, Dominic will be more involved with that, but we'll, I would imagine, if there's no existing maintenance agreement, there's probably gonna be a request to have something that, like that in place, more for future than for what your current situation is. So other than that, it's pretty straightforward.
Mr. Chair, should the board health approve, get board health approval on this? Because it's a new house.
There's a, a new house with a new onsite septic system.
Yeah, so our intention was, and after communicating with the engineer from the previous meeting, was to get pretty far along with the planning board and understand the receptiveness of the plan, and then go to the health department to get approval for the septic, and then come back to finalize the plan. We already went to the health department for this project, actually, to, to, to improve the existing property's septic system. So we already did that. We already presented them the subdivision plan. So we are actually, I would suggest 60% of the way through approving that. We already did observed soil tests, and we submitted a preliminary plan to them. They basically said, go to the planning board to get feedback before we give you approval for that. So we've already started that work. We actually got approval for the repair already on August 1st of 2023 from the health department. So we're like, I would say, 65% of the way there on that.
Therefore, we should refer it to them, too.
They don't take referrals.
They don't take referrals?
No, but it...
It's the condition of our signing of the plan, they get that.
It will be discussed between the applicant and the health department. The other thing I was noticing, and it looks like it's because of the septic system on the existing house lot, it, it will create somewhat of an irregularly shaped lot with that kind of, well, I can't think of any other word besides irregular, between the new lot and the existing lot.
Yeah, multi-sided polygon.
Yeah, multi, how many sides? I think it's, uh, probably a lot.
Yeah, so the intent there is to achieve the square footage requirement while also avoiding the proximity of the septic repair. So we have the, you know, this, this figure here, this is the approved septic, and this is an expansion area of the septic. So, you know, that's the health department's way of ensuring that if this one fails, you have more room, you know, but with this irregularly shaped polygon, we've achieved the square footage requirement.
And it looks like it's kind of following the outline of the septic disposal area on...
Exactly.
On that existing lot.
The new, the new septic system would be more orthogonal in shape, but the other one has some peculiar soil conditions.
Yeah, it's, we're, this is the result of meeting the zoning requirements.
Yeah.
Right? Like, would, it'd be nice to have a little bit more concise. It would be, but we're just meeting the zoning requirements here, and so it's led us to this.
So we're at 40,012 square feet.
Yeah. And is there an existing well on the, for the existing house?
The existing well is here.
So there will be a new well for the new house lot?
Yeah, so the existing well is here, and like I said, this septic has been approved with all the Department of Health regulations. The new well is here, which is in accordance with all the requirements. And we, like I said, we already got feedback on the location of the well and the new septic. Everything is in accordance with that. They just couldn't approve it until we went to the planning board.
Okay. All right.
Yeah, we wanted to do that homework before we got to this point, because that's always the stickiest point.
Yeah. Any other questions from board members? If not, I'll just see if there's anyone in the audience who would like to make informal comments about this proposal. Raise your hand if you're interested. Don't see anybody. All right. All right. Is there a motion to accept the application for the Fantasi three-lot subdivision at 1613 Route 9D, and to refer this application to the town engineer, town planning board attorney, Chelsea Fire District, and New York State Department of Transportation for review and comment?
So moved.
Felix moves it. Is there a second?
Okay.
Bob seconds it. Any further discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Any abstentions? All right, that passes seven to zero. So we'll have a more complete discussion with input from our consultants at the May 9th meeting, and then you can get together with Debbie and figure out how to modify that application to include the neighboring lot owner.
Okay.
All right. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
We are on the regular project reviews. Basis Industrial Route 9D, site development plan and special use permit, board to review the submission made by the applicant's representative on March 27, 2024, a revised draft environmental assessment form, Part II, a revised draft EAF, Part III, and a draft negative declaration. Welcome.
Good evening.
Um, why don't you just introduce your, well, I think we've, we've been introduced to your team over the months, so just give us a quick update on the submission that was recently made, and then we're gonna, I think, start taking a look at the environmental documents that we drafted up.
Sure, so just in, in summary, we, for the record, Corey Salomon from Zaren Stimets. You know, we submitted a comment response memo, mostly responding to outstanding engineering comments. If you'd like us to walk through what those were, I could pass it over to Zach.
Yeah, just briefly.
Sure.
Good evening, members of the board. As my colleague mentions, Cam from Dynamic Engineering. We did update the plans after the last hearing. We added a bunch of the requested notes and some further clarification to the plan set itself. I'm happy to go through the notes, but maybe we get to some of the comments first and go through after. That's really the bulk of it. The plan itself is still largely the same, was related to a few clarification items. Maybe we go through them as we get into the, the fine detail.
All right. Okay, well, why don't we go to Liz Axelson and John Bodendorf from C P L, and we do have a review memo dated April 8th, 2024, so however you would like to split that up and go through that?
Well, I'll, I'll just touch on a couple comments. So progress was made on the application. The new submittal had some more information. I'm just gonna touch on a few points. We say right up front that, you know, we're still expressing concern about the, right out only at the gas station, because it's very close to that intersection. And let's see. So there's also continuing pedestrian concerns, but, you know, there is sidewalk proposed all along the front of the site, and so in one of my comments, I'm talking about, this is number three, the idea of having a pedestrian crosswalk across 9D, because you have folks, a lot of big neighborhoods in Brockway, that would hopefully want to be crossing over to the site to go to the restaurant and, or, or the convenience place, so. And then we still ultimately need to know a little bit more information related to the basement area, so I touch on, on that in a couple of places, because the interpretation talks, speaks to... Because the interpretation talks, speaks to floor area, headroom, and finished grade-related aspects. And then.
Can I ask you a question?
Sure.
I thought that there might have been a bit of incongruency here between the focus on the crosswalk and the recognition that there was no possible sidewalk on Pappas Lane because of the footpath street. So consequently, the people that, and Pappas Lane will be much busier as a result of the additional traffic coming out of the entire development. So the people coming, wanting to use the crosswalk as well as wanting to use the potential sidewalk in front that are coming out of the development will be forced to walk on Pappas Lane.
Well, I think the way that the onsite vehicular circulation is organized and the way that the pedestrian ways are laid out. If there was a crosswalk that came across and went right to the sidewalk proposed that runs right in front of the gas station, the pedestrian ways are available so that a pedestrian could cross at that point and go to any of the places on the site on a sidewalk.
And that's why the incongruency is coming down Pappas Lane to access that crosswalk. And that will require people to essentially walk, people that live back on Pappas Lane will take advantage of the new development, so they'll have to walk on the street.
Yeah, I mean, I don't know that there's a solution for that because, you know, the neighborhoods are there, and I'm not intending to make excuses for that situation, but the neighborhoods are there. They don't have a sidewalk. Pappas Lane right now appears to be defined by some hardscape on the, I don't know whether to call it north or east side of Pappas Lane. And the other side faces the development. And so I did measure and take a look at that, and there really is barely enough room there for two lanes of traffic. And the concept that the applicants are showing on their plan is that vehicles will come in Pappas Lane and go out Pappas Lane. And once they're in and out Pappas Lane, everything else, every other movement they need to make on the site can be done internally because of the proposed accessways. So that is an unfortunate effect, but the big picture is that there are going to be a lot more pedestrian improvements in that area. So I've kind of looked at it as kind of a big trade-off, but one comment that is made in our review memo is that we need the details on what Pappas Lane is, and so I'm suggesting a private road specification or whatever we want to call it, that's gonna be like a local road specification. You know, noting, you know, that, you know, drainage will be done in a different way and there won't be room for sidewalks, that kind of thing. It's a great question.
The pedestrian crosswalk that we're looking to have added would cross Route 9D and allow people coming from Brockway to cross Route 9D in a much safer way than they do now.
Yeah, I think that's an excellent, totally support. My thought was, is there anything that we can do with Pappas Lane to continue this whole notion of sidewalk?
And so I think a number of times we brought up the, as Liz mentions, the question of what will happen to Pappas Lane? What kinds of improvements will be necessary in order to increase the access and egress points along there into the project site? And we still have seen no plans, and I think that's gonna be a question that we're gonna need. And I'll raise that again a little bit later when we start talking about the environmental documents, but we're gonna need to see details on exactly how Pappas Lane will be improved and whether, you know, if sidewalks could be added. I mean, that would be nice, but that probably is not likely.
Yeah, and I don't, I don't. I don't know that there's any wiggle rumor that the applicant's representatives have had any kind of conversations with whoever owns the other side of Pappas Lane and all that, and it's not, you know, technically part of the project area. Ideally, it would be great. It would, I mean, if you think about it, this project is gonna kind of activate this area more than it already is because you do have a mini plaza across the street. You do have some homes. So there is the potential there to make it really nice if sidewalks could be added along Pappas.
So when we get to page four of CPL's memo, there's a whole list of things dealing with Pappas Lane, but let's not jump ahead.
Right, that's sort of the technical, how does she keep coming up with more comments? At this point, we're getting closer to seeing the big picture, so it's natural to start asking more questions about Pappas Lane like you're asking. Let's see. One of the things I talk about also on page four has to do with architectural plans and the effect that that has on the whole big picture of how this fits along this stretch. And I guess I just got concerned. I want to make sure that the board has assurance that the architecture that we're looking at is what is gonna end up being constructed on the site, and, you know, things can change during construction. But I think that the architecture and the color scheme is very important in terms of the aesthetic of the area and how important that is to the character of the area. So I made a comment about that. I don't want to keep babbling because I know you guys have long meetings.
Well, no, we want you to go through this in as much detail as we can.
All right.
So I think you already skipped over a few, you know, that are on the way. Some of them are significant.
Yeah, I highlighted a couple of key points.
So back to pages two and three, I think there were some interesting things.
Oh.
You talked about sign variances. You talked about the parking waiver and loading spaces waiver that the planning board's gonna need to consider. Then that will take us to page four.
Yeah. Do you want me to go over those, or you?
Sure.
Sure. I don't think we should try to shortcut time just for the sake of doing it. I think we need to go through.
Yeah, I mean, the variances have been sort of a record on the plans. One of the concerns, I do have a little bit of a concern about the loading areas, which I honestly am not finding the comment right now, but it has to do with the fact that there's two underground loading spaces. And in a prior memorandum, I suggested share, two more loading spaces that would be shared between, one would be shared between sort of the storage and the restaurant, if a location could be found. And also, another one would sort of be shared between the car wash and the existing convenience area. They have fifteen parking spaces there. And the one thing that I did look up, I know there was a question at the last meeting, well, do they need to really be drawn on the plan? So I looked around, and what I noticed is there are other storage planning, site plans that I've seen that do involve, I went through some of the agenda packets that do show and delineate loading spaces, so I do think those should be, I think those should be shown on the plans and with signage or whatever it is that is normally required for that kind of thing. And let's see. All right, and then on page five, I talk a little bit about.
Before you get into page five, you want to just go through the Pappas Lane list that's on page four, which I thought was pretty important.
All right, so then I'm just gonna paraphrase. The network of, this is halfway down, page four. "The network of interior accessways proposed to serve the site is consistent with the code of the town of Fishkill. All residential and existing proposed non," wait a minute. "All existing residential and existing and proposed non-residential uses would have access due to proposed improvements to Pappas Lane, a private road. Pappas Lane would be improved to modified local road standards." And so I refer to the code sections. But there's a lot of information that we need, such as documentation about the existing use and management of Pappas Lane. I don't know if there's anything that defines that area or governs it, any management plan or agreement. Provide an approximate detail of existing Pappas Lane, so we can see what is the existing sort of detail or profile. Provide a proposed private road detail for the reconstruction of Pappas Lane to serve the proposed development and existing uses. And I'm referring to local road, the local road standard, and they work from that. But then in the next comment, I'm acknowledging that due to the existing width, it looks like it's twenty-five to twenty-six feet. It varies. That vehicles using the redeveloped Pappas Lane, it wouldn't be practical to include sidewalks, as I've said before. The area for improvement should be delineated on the plans. It might be bigger than what the ultimate road ends up being, just like the site. The area of the finished improved Pappas Lane should be delineated and describe how the area of improvement would be managed. And then I speak about the applicant's also working with New York State DOT, Department of Transportation, about any signage on Route 9D guiding visitors to Pappas Lane and also interiorly guiding people using the site back to Pappas Lane. The idea is to minimize use of the other access points. And then on to page five. The other part of this is regarding the closure of the right-out-only gas station driveway. Another alternative is to note that the applicant's representatives expressed concerns about the gas station lease. And the plans, I think, should be revised to define exactly when and how the gas station right-out-only driveway would be closed in the future. I guess the concern is the lease is up. If another gas station wants to be placed there, the concern would be that there would be impetus to keep that right-out-only. And so I think it would be helpful to have maybe first some narrative about how that would be accomplished and then figure out how that can be spelled out on the site plans, so that it's on a signed document.
Yeah, because if DOT allows that driveway to stay for the duration of that lease for the current gas station owner, then we want to make sure that when that lease is up, that that driveway can be closed and the sidewalk can be extended all the way through it instead of through another crosswalk that isn't anywhere near as safe.
Yeah.
But that doesn't affect their future income if the gas station is no longer there? You're gonna say nothing else can go there?
Oh, no, that's not what I'm saying at all. I know they're gonna want to put a business at that space. I guess the concern is that, the assumption, I believe, is getting rid of the right-out-only driveway infers that there'll be a better access plan for whatever use is proposed next, whether it be a convenience store. I don't know what.
And it's still gonna be up to the State DOT as to whether they're going to allow that gas station driveway to remain open during this, with this project.
Ultimately.
That's an unknown at this point.
I think I already spoke about guiding, guiding visitors through the site to the various businesses. We need some kind of onsite signage to keep people circulating around the site so they know how to get where to go and to direct visitors back to the site, from the site and the various businesses back to Pappas Lane. I touched on the loading space concept, and so it'd be good to hear some kind of an answer on that. I think just having the two loading spaces in the basement isn't quite enough because there are other uses on the site where they're gonna need loading at some point, even if it's not as frequent. There should be a designated area, so that can be accomplished because sometimes loading occurs during the day, so. And then I'm going over to page eight. The architectural elevations, we've had them for a while. They appear to be satisfactory based on the comments I've heard from the board. And up until now, they are just showing elevation saying the basement is ten feet, eight inches below grade level or whatever, as far as I can tell from that. So what I'm suggesting is that those can now be coordinated with the elevations on the grading plan so that we know what kind of heights that we're dealing with.
I think you're on page six, right?
Yeah.
Yeah, I'm on, yeah, I'm on page six, sorry.
Yeah. No problem.
Did I skip something else you wanted me to touch on?
No, you just jumped from page five to eight.
Sorry.
But you were on six.
Sorry about that. And then regarding the demolition plan, I think, I do believe we should have some detailed rock removal notes that at least show, you know, what are the first methods like ripping and hammering that would be used first for rock removal if rock is encountered, which I'm pretty sure some rock will be encountered. And then at some point, there should be plan notation on there that acknowledges that if those methods aren't working, that blasting might be necessary and to acknowledge the code under which that would be governed.
Well, except we also need a much clearer note on the plan saying there shall be no blasting to begin with.
Well, that's right. Yeah, there's a mixture of notes.
We talked about that last meeting, and the applicant basically agreed to that.
Yep, and it is in the comments. It's just, we kind of have to spell out all the eventualities, I think. If they're proposing no blasting, then we need to know the rock removal methodology.
There's gonna probably have to be a lot more than just notes on the plan. There's gonna have to be conditions in the resolution, and again, we talked about the possibility of a separate kind of an agreement regarding blasting. That's where all those things can actually occur, I think. But the point will be, which we'll get to again when we're starting in on the environmental, the EAF form and the NEGDEC, is that with all these things we're listing now, we're accumulating quite a number of items that are, I'll give you a little heads-up, making me wonder whether we can actually go as far as approving the environmental documents tonight. Anyway, that's a preview. We'll get to that later.
Okay.
So, go ahead. Sorry for the interruption.
Oh, no, it's fine. It's actually helpful. And then the only one that I'm touching on on page seven is a lot of progress was made on the lighting plan, but we still need to know how they're gonna use timers and dimmers to control lighting during daytime hours or when lighting is not needed. Regarding the engineering comments, I'm skipping over now to page eight. A lot of the conversation at the last meeting had to do with things we didn't know about cut and fill. And so we've added an engineering comment to provide a cut and fill analysis. And then.
Is there anything in the engineering list that you want to go through, John? I mean, a lot of them are just repeat comments, right?
Yeah, most of them are repeats, so I think I'll just let Liz kind of skip over those because we've talked about them.
Yeah, they all, comments twenty-one through thirty, pretty much say comment remains to be addressed.
Okay.
So, or one was comment was revised. And then traffic, there's a little good news there. Previous comments have been satisfactorily addressed, no follow-up. I'm on page eight, number thirty-three, the report is complete and correct. Number thirty-four, outstanding New York State DOT review of eastern right-out-only driveway at gas station, approval of the applicant's request, this is the bottom of the page. Approval of the applicant's request to retain this driveway rests with the New York State DOT as they issue the necessary permits for driveways on Route 9D. And that has to do with the right-out-only driveway. right out only driveway. And those are all the comments, except that I skipped over the one that basically says I've provided the planning board with the seeker documents, full environmental assessment form, part two, it's revised per our last discussion. So, and then, you know, fully AF part three was similarly briefly revised to, to check as a draft, to pursue a determination of non-significance. And then I went ahead and prepared a seeker determination of non-significance notice, so that's all the verbiage, all spelled out about elaborating on the impacts and mitigation. And so those are prepared as the board requested. And then I, I guess the next thing is to know whether or not the board has any questions or comments about the fully AF part two, fully AF part three, or the notice.
Well, that's, before we do that, I was gonna ask board members if there are any questions or comments so far on CPL's memo and the list of things in that, or anything else you're wondering about. And then we'll get to the environmental documents.
I thought it was, I thought it was pretty thorough and captured a lot of the stuff that we had brought up at the previous meeting, so. I would say it's pretty good.
The only thing I was gonna ask the applicant team is whether there, there have been any further discussions or feedback from state DOT on that pedestrian crossing of Route 9D at this point.
Good evening, everyone, Corey Chase with Dynamic Engineering. Nothing regarding the crossing of Route 9D, our latest resubmission is still under review. We're happy to present that to them as part of the next submission. They did officially okay, you know, the sidewalk along the frontage. I know that as you get in front of the gas station property, we're actually reducing the shoulder width slightly to get that continuous sidewalk all along that frontage. They did explicitly state that they were okay with that being proposed as is.
Okay.
So, given that it is going to be a pedestrian enhancement at the intersection, it's my professional opinion that they won't have an issue proposing a pedestrian crossing along Route 9D. Obviously, we'll need to ensure that it's properly located and striped and signed and all those things, but that's just a matter of providing the department with the details necessary. So, in my professional opinion, they'll view it as a significant enhancement, especially with the provision that, as you mentioned, we are providing sidewalk all along our frontage and various pedestrian connection points into the development. So certainly, as was noted, it's gonna encourage people to cross, you know, Route 9D to gain access to the site. So, again, I think that they won't take any issue with that, subject to a professional design being provided.
Okay.
It seems like it'd be good for business on both sides.
Agreed.
Yeah.
Do you think it'll be done in the next year?
In the next year? We certainly hope so, with DOT. Yeah, the latest comments that we got back from them, you know, weren't very significant. It was more on the report, which we responded to in conjunction with responding to CPL's comments. So, hoping that we'll get, you know, feedback on the approval of the report, approval of the access as proposed, and then we would move forward with submitting the design plans to them for the access points, any improvements that we're making within the right of way and that pedestrian crossing as well.
Thank you. So, getting back to you, Liz, why don't you take us through the revisions that were incorporated into the EAF part two? We went through it in a lot of detail at the March meeting, so I don't think we need to go through every question again, but maybe if you can just highlight where you made the changes.
I have to get out my scribbled up copy, then.
And then after that, we'll get to the draft NAGDEC, which is new for the board to talk about.
Well, let me, let me just, I'm gonna go from what I have in front of me and, and what I remember, so I'm not digging around in my folders while you're sitting there waiting. So I'm gonna summarize as we go. Impact on land, there are three moderate impacts. Construction of land where bedrock is exposed or within 5 feet of ground surface. Construction continues for more than a year, 18 months, and will not occur in multiple phases, all one phase. And most of the site was previously disturbed, yet limited number of trees, which are all proposed to be removed. So those are the moderate ones there, and there was one small impact.
And then you're, I think you kind of added this note on the bottom of page one.
Oh, yes, I did. Yes, thank you.
And that talks about...
So I'm gonna just, I'm gonna just read it, rather than try to paraphrase. Regarding question 1D, which is about removing more than 1,000 tons of natural material, small impact. At the 31424 meeting, planning board questioned that less than 1,000 tons of natural material would be removed, and the applicant's representatives indicated the excavated material would be reused on-site and cut and fill calculations would be done. We didn't get them in the last submittal, but we'll hopefully get them soon. The March 2724 submittal did not include those. The demolition plan sheet note refers to code chapter 65 explosives and combustibles, which I feel the note should be deleted, and rock removal notation stating that no blasting will occur is needed.
Yeah, that's what we were...
Kind of a mixed bag.
That's what we were talking about before.
Right. I mean, that, that's why in, in, on other projects, I've suggested a progressive set of notation regarding that issue. Let's see, impacts on surface water, I don't believe there were any changes there. It's basically upland erosion issues, stormwater discharge, siltation of receiving water bodies, these are all small. Effect on water bodies within or downstream, again, small impact. Expansion of existing wastewater treatment facilities with connection to the sewage treatment plant. And then I'm going on to full, I'm skipping page three, because those are all no impacts. I hope I'm right there. Yep. On page four, there is one small impact, project site may contain Indian abat and long-eared bat habitat. Regarding the response to question 7B, impact on plants and animals, protective notation on the plans, oh, this isn't correct. I changed this in the NAGDEC. I had wanted it to be changed to begin October 1st. But then, Jonathan, I think you had a question about that. So the way it is in the NAGDEC is the way it should be. Okay? It would be October 15th, I believe. I think that's what the notation is on the plans. On page five, there's a small impact on removal of vegetation, scattered, small wooded areas. Wooded areas are now shown on the plans, so now we know it's being removed, and we have that timeline. Impact on aesthetic resources, we have 1, 2, 3, 4, 5, 6, 7, 8 moderate impacts in that section. And this is related to rural community and scenic character of the Route 9D gateway corridor, running from 90's intersection with I-84, Interstate 84 north of the project site, and really basically to the town line. And one of the notes is that the storage building is at 242.4 feet long, is somewhat out of character with nearby buildings, and the project involves removal of scattered, small wooded areas. No impact on historic and archaeological. And then on page seven, there are no impacts there. Transportation, there are three moderate impacts. Traffic increase may exceed the capacity of the road network. Proposed action will alter the present pattern of people or goods, pattern of movement of people or goods. And the project may adversely impact traffic, access, circulation or pedestrian, safety on Route 9D with additional points of access near a busy intersection. The project may also result in a large increase in the use of Pappas Lane, a private road.
So that one's marked as large impact.
And that one's marked as large impact, yes. Impact on noise, odor, and light, bottom of page eight. That's a moderate impact, and I've added some notation. So that's 15A on the bottom of page eight, moderate impact. Regarding question 15A, demolition and construction may result in moderate noise impacts. A note is needed on the demolition plan indicating that no blasting will occur as part of the development. The note on the demolition plan referring to code chapter 65 must be deleted since no blasting will occur as part of site development. And then moving on to page nine, the impacts on lighting are small now, because there was a correction in some of the glare over the property line, which was positive. No impact on human health. And then I'm on to page nine now, the fully AF part two, consistency with community plans. And in this particular one, we have 1, 2, 3, 4 moderate impacts. And this all has to do, again, with the rural community scenic character on Route 9D, the gateway corridor running from I-84 up to the northern end of town along Route 9D. And it makes reference to the Duchess County Greenway Guides, and the importance of those design elements in, in the proposed development. And again, construction of the large building with a long facade changing the character of the area visible from the Route 9D gateway corridor. And then lastly, consistency with community character, there are three moderate impacts. Interfering with the use or enjoyment of officially recognized or designated public resources, meaning the Route 9D corridor, inconsistency with predominant architectural scale, and construction of a large building, again. So, those, that's, that's a, I think that's a pretty good and detailed summary of the areas of impact. Does the board have any questions about those, or the changes?
Yep.
I read the notes that I had from the meeting, and then I watched the video for certain parts of it, to make sure it was correct for what the board wanted. And then full EAF part three, I went ahead and, it was already checked as a type 1 action. The EAF portions completed were parts one, two, and three. And then on page two of EAF part three, I've checked A, which reads the project will result in no significant adverse impacts on the environment, and therefore an environmental impact statement need not be prepared accordingly, this negative declaration is issued. And again, this is a draft, nothing has happened yet, but I'm just reading you the language that's in there.
So, if there are any questions or comments from board members, if not, we'll go on to the draft NAGDEC, because that's where a lot of the details from the environmental assessment form are kind of fleshed out.
Yeah, I agree. Let's go through the document, but I'm questioning whether B should be checked instead of A, since we did identify a major with the Pappas Lane on transportation that was identified as major, so perhaps B should be checked, but let's go through the EAF.
Say again.
Perhaps B should be checked instead of A, because there was one major impact. But let's go through the document.
And also, let me just mention, so actually, what was checked, that was under transportation, right? Number 13?
Yep, last one.
So that's checked as a potentially large increase. And there's, we have to understand, there's a difference between a large impact and a significant impact. And we'll, we can talk about that a little bit more as we go through.
Yeah, I mean, let's go through the document.
So if you have one large impact, you have to put into context what that large means, and then determine whether that's significant or not. So that's, you know, that's where the NAGDEC could help us, I think. All right. So, I don't think we need to read line by line, word by word, but maybe you can kind of guide us through the draft NAGDEC without going too crazy.
Okay. I don't wanna do that. All right, so page one is really, describes the action, lists all the property text parcels that are involved, and the description of the proposed action continues on to page two, including utility infrastructure improvements, water and sewer system connections, 4.98 acres of disturbance related to demolition, and ultimately, the developed area is somewhat slightly less than that, but that is the whole disturbance area. Reasons supporting this determination, I tried to have these follow the fully AF part two. So the first one is, talks about the disturbed area, and describes in detail what's involved, the demolition area being 4.98 acres, the resulting project site being 4.76 acres, and talks about the existing buildings and the proposed buildings in 1, A, B, and C. So there'll be a moderate impact on land. And it just goes over the different materials that were submitted, including a soil resource report. And bottom of that says, accordingly, rock removal would be done with mechanical methods, blasting should be avoided. So we will need clarification on the plan about that. And then I'm on number two, small impact on land with excavation and removal of more than 1,000 tons of natural material. Again, we requested the cut and fill analysis, but the idea is to use most of the material on the site. Number three, moderate impact on land, construction that will occur for more than a year, 18 months. And then there's some items at the bottom. One of them is to ensure timing of tree cutting relative to the certain bat species, and it says, see more details below. Then I'm going on to page five. Moderate impact on land, removal of existing trees and vegetation, 18 months of disturbance. Some of this is, is repeated, but it goes along with each of the individual impacts. Proposed landscaping plan includes extensive planting of tree shrubs, ornamental grasses, and ground cover plants. Proper implementation of the landscaping plan should stabilize the areas disturbed, in addition to stormwater sedimentation control and stormwater control. Small impacts on surface water bodies, that has to do with downstream runoff, 5, A, B, and C. Six, small impact on surface water bodies, the need for construction of new expand, newer expansion existing wastewater treatment facilities. And the idea here is that the operation of the project will involve several businesses and generate 3,360 gallons per day of sanitary wastewater that would ultimately, there would need to be an extension of sanitary sewer line to take it down Brockway Road. And then I'm skipping over to page six, redevelopment of a small impact on plants and animals. And I'm reiterating here at the end of that paragraph, the submitted plan, demolition plan, overall site plan, site plan, and grading plan, each included notes stating tree cutting shall occur between November 1 and March 31. That is the correct notation. I revisited it and realized that they had it right the first time. Small impact on plants and animals, removal of vegetation, again, is noted in number eight. And areas that are disturbed for development that don't contain buildings will be stabilized as landscaped and lawn areas. Number nine, number of moderate aesthetic, impacts on aesthetic resources, and again, this goes back to the corridor, indicating the project will be visible from 9D, from publicly accessible viewpoints, pedestrian areas now, diminished enjoyment of, of views, and the large facade of the architectural building. A lot of this is repeat from the EAF. On page seven, number 10, site redevelopment will have moderate impacts on transportation. And again, it goes through what's being built, the town's complete street policies are noted, New York State DOT is noted, Duchess County and New York State DOT commenting on closing that driveway, those are also noted. And then sidewalk and a crosswalk across Route 9D are noted as important elements of pedestrian safety. Going on to... Going on to page eight?
Oh, could we stay on page seven?
Okay.
First of all, there is a typo at the bottom of, I believe a typo at the bottom of page seven, last line actually, or it's Route ninety, would be to funnel much of the sites entering and existing traffic.
Exiting, sorry.
Exiting.
Okay.
Take the S out.
Good catch.
Where you're talking about the traffic pattern, movement of people are good, that's a number ten. That's all good stuff, kind of reiterating what was in the transportation, the traffic impact study and our traffic consultant's review of that. I thought it actually might be a good idea to add a sentence at the end of number ten. Actually, it's the end of the first paragraph of number ten.
Okay.
As ten continues on through the page. Saying something like, "The applicant has submitted a traffic impact study, TIS, prepared by Dynamic Engineering, dated March twenty-six, twenty twenty-four, indicating that impacted intersections and driveways will function at acceptable levels of service in the build condition." That's just taking a sentence right from our traffic consultant's part of your memo. And I think it's always good when there's a major study like a traffic impact study to just put at least a reference in the neg deck.
Yep. And, okay.
So, I can go over the wording of that sentence, but I'll read it one more time. "The applicant has submitted a traffic impact study, TIS, prepared by Dynamic Engineering, dated March twenty-six, twenty twenty-four, indicating that impacted intersections and driveways will function at acceptable levels of service in the build condition."
Yep. I got it in my own awful scrawling and abbreviations. It is, yeah. Yeah. Anything else on that page?
No. Not for me.
That's a good, that's a good change. So page eight, number eleven, notes a small impact on transportation, noting a change to existing transportation systems, possibility of degrading existing pedestrian and bicycle safety. And then it describes at the end of the first paragraph in number eleven, "Site plans are modified over the course of the project's review to create three limited points of access on Route ninety frontage, and those are described." And then I repeat again, "The town's complete streets policy, comments by Duchess County Department of Planning, noting the need for sidewalk on the site's frontage, and that it's shown in the plans, consultation with DOT, and that the planning board will continue working with the applicant and New York State DOT to determine what types of improvements such as a crosswalk across Route ninety, possibly including flashing lights, may be appropriate to address pedestrian safety in this area." And then we get to number twelve, "The proposed redevelopment, site redevelopment may have a large impact on transportation, resulting in a change to existing transportation systems, adversely impacting traffic access, circulation, pedestrian safety on Route ninety with additional points of access near busy intersection." Then it talks about, this is the same paragraph on number twelve, "Result in large increases in the use of Pappas Lane, a private road affecting a bank and residents who currently use this road. More details will be requested from the project sponsor about the proposed improvements to Pappas Lane to convert it to a standard of a local road, modified to accommodate more intensive use with the addition of two full movement driveways for access to the proposed site redevelopment while continuing to serve existing traffic to and from nearby homes." Although it's a private road, there's very little room within the existing width to accommodate a sidewalk. Accordingly, the site's pedestrian pathways are designed to provide safe pathways from Route ninety to the existing convenience store and the proposed car wash and restaurant with sidewalk connections to and from the proposed storage facility.
So I'm going to come back to this one a little bit later.
And then there's more on twelve. Go ahead.
Yeah. No, I don't want to change anything in it. See if anyone else on the board does want to make any changes, but I'm going to come, I'm going to come back.
Well, there's more at the top of page.
Yeah, yeah, but I'm just, I'm just saying, I'm going to come back to this later because of the wording you put in there about more details will be requested from the project sponsor about the proposed improvements, et cetera, et cetera.
Yeah, I'm looking at the same sentence, but also to maintain it as, as you would a local, not just the improvements, but the long-term maintenance. So that part is, the long-term maintenance part is not captured there. That's an important part of getting us where we need to go.
That's a, why don't you, do you have some, where something could be inserted there? That's a good idea.
About the proposed improvements and long-term maintenance plan.
My thought, my thought here was, what's the definition of private after this? The change in use? That was the thought that I had as I was reading this.
Say, say again.
What's the, what is the definition of private road?
Well, it is an existing private road.
Right. And.
Not owned by the town, not owned by the state.
As a result of these changes in use that we're alluding to here, which will require significant additional improvements as well as long-term maintenance, what does that mean to the definition of private?
It's, I mean, it's still private property. As far as we know, there hasn't been any agreement or anything proposed to make this a private road right-of-way, a public road right-of-way. So.
It's sort of like in the subdivision we were just talking about earlier today, which is a different scale, but that's basically a private driveway. This is a little bit more than that. This is a private road. But they have an easement and a maintenance agreement in the subdivision. Similarly, there should be something comparable on a slightly larger scale in this situation, but we really have no details on any of that.
And that, that was my thought as well, is if, if we continue to have this defined as private, then there needs to be, by the larger scale, a set of associated documentations that consider future maintenance, consider the issue of safety, consider a bunch of different things between all of those private elements that own the road.
That, that was what we were getting at in the comments that are in the CPO memorandum about all the information we need about the existing road. What does the existing detail look like? What is proposed? What does that detail look like?
And while we're talking about it, again, this number twelve dealing with Pappas Lane, I think is a key reason why we are proposing to check large impact in, on the EAF and talking about large impact here in the neg deck. And yet, we're saying that more details will be requested about it. So is that the way that the impacts will be addressed by asking for more details or?
I mean, I have to tell you.
I'll expand on that in a minute, but.
Because that, that, yeah.
But so for now, we're going to add Anthony's suggested language, proposed improvements and long-term maintenance plan.
And are we, where are you adding? Are you adding that after the paragraph?
I'll reread the sentence, I guess.
Yeah, yeah, thanks.
And where are you, you want it?
The sentence that says, starts with more details? I would suggest the sentence read, "More details will be requested from the project sponsor about proposed improvements and long-term maintenance plan for Pappas Lane to convert and maintain it to the standard of a local road."
You got it?
Let me, let me, let me try again here. Okay. So the sentence begins, "More details will be requested from the project sponsor about proposed improvements to and long-term maintenance plan for the continued use of Pappas Road?" The long-term or?
I was saying for Pappas Lane to convert and maintain it to the standard of a local road. There's probably a few ways you can word that, but, yeah.
Convert it to a local road.
Convert and maintain it to the standard of a local road.
Of a local road. Okay. That's, that's, you want me to read it back?
Sure.
Okay. "More details will be requested from the project sponsor about the proposed improvements to and long-term maintenance plan for Pappas Lane to convert, convert it to, I would say, and maintain it to the standard of a local road."
Yeah, I think the, yeah.
You want me to do it again?
No, the essence of what I'm saying is captured in that.
Okay.
That's, that's good.
All right.
Okay.
I have horrible handwriting, so it's hard to read.
No, thank you.
Sorry.
All right.
And then there's more at the top of page nine, which I'd kind of like to read and paraphrase through. Additionally, there is a transit stop at the existing gas station which may be affected by the conversion of Pappas Lane to more intensive traffic volume to accommodate new uses on the project site. Importantly, the improvements to and increased use of Pappas Lane will necessitate the creation of a fully functional four-way intersection affecting the habits of the numerous neighborhood areas and homes currently using Brockway Road as a primary point of access to Route ninety and all points beyond Route nine, Interstate eighty-four, Beacon Train Station, I eighty-seven, et cetera. That's sort of a cumulative kind of thing.
I eighty-seven?
Ah, yes. Yeah. I'm, I'm looking at the major road networks. As you go south, there are people funneling into ninety and I envisioned them, if they're going south, they might be headed over to Route nine. They might be using I eighty-four. They might be heading to the Beacon Train Station, and they might also cross the Newburgh Beacon Bridge to get on to Interstate eighty-seven.
So you're just talking about the regional aspects of it?
Well, because there's a lot of people coming out of that area through that intersection and, I think there's quite a few people that are working or in transit, so.
That makes sense.
It's a big neighborhood area. Is that okay?
Yeah.
Okay. "As noted above, town's complete streets policy and the CPU confirm the need for construction of sidewalk on the site's frontage in coordination with the New York State DOT, Duchess County Department of Planning and Development. Referral also notes the need for sidewalk on the site's frontage, which has been discussed with the applicant, who's consulted with DOT on this matter. Planning Board will continue to work with applicant and DOT to determine what types of improvements such as a crosswalk across Route ninety, including flashing lights, may be appropriate. Finally, the controls at the signalized intersection would be adjusted to the increased vehicular traffic as well as to accommodate more frequent pedestrian crossings."
Was doing transportation. We now have buses all the time. Should there be a bus stop anywhere?
There are a couple of bus stops in that area. I don't know if.
I don't use it that much, but I just know that.
What I don't, yeah.
Running all over the place then.
There's one right at the intersection, which I think is on the side with the proposed development, and then there's another one, I think, a little further up on the other side because there's that mini plaza. So there, so you can, is that correct? Oh, good.
Yeah, there's an official bus stop actually right in front of the mini plaza. But the bus will basically stop, for instance, at that little pavilion that's right at Brockway. So, I mean, they'll pick you up pretty much anywhere along there, but the official stop is down a little farther.
Yeah, but there's definitely existing transit pathways and, and stops there. So it's one more thing that tells you it's a busy place. And there's the stadium too, so.
Yep.
Expanded stadium.
Yes.
Yeah, that's quite a job there, and they've really messed up the road right now.
Anything else on that one? Because after there, it gets a little, I think it gets kind of snoozy after that. So thirteen, "Small impact on energy as it may involve heating and or cooling more than a hundred thousand square feet of building area." Has a small impact. Fourteen, at the bottom of page nine, "Proposed action will have a moderate impact on noise as it will result in increased noise pollution during the eighteen-month construction phase." And then I go back through, any rock removal or anticipated would involve, if any rock removal were anticipated that would involve blasting, would have to follow the requirements of code chapter sixty-five explosives. And involve.
But it will not involve blasting.
Yeah, right. And may require revisiting this determination of significance during the eighteen-month construction phase, which may potentially involve rock removal. All work will follow the requirements of code chapter one oh eight, noise. And page ten, "Proposed action will have a small impact on light shining onto neighboring properties." Again, glare was diminished in certain areas that were noted in our prior comments. Sixteen, site.
Could I just go back to the top of page ten where it says, "Construction notes will be added to site development plan stating there will be no blasting?"
Yes.
I just thought about inserting, "Applicant has agreed that construction notes will be added to the site development plan."
Good.
However, that, all right, as I'm suggesting, there could be some further changes to this. As you will see, I'm previewing it.
Uh-oh. Okay. Um, let's see.
And then there's another typo in number fifteen, the last sentence, "Further lightning mitigation." How about lighting mitigation? Unless you think lightning is another environmental impact that we haven't addressed.
Oh, it's in the, it's in the middle. Okay. Okay.
I was amazed at how few typos I caught though. That's pretty good.
Well, I mean, the spell checker wouldn't have caught that one.
No, but hey, I could have.
Oh.
All right. Moving right along.
Sixteen, "Site development, including storage facility, may have moderate impacts as it will, as it is not consistent with land use plans. Land use component different from or in sharp contrast to surrounding land use patterns." And then I talk about the large-scale storage business out of scale with uses in the surrounding area. Architectural design being modified to present a more articulated facade than originally proposed. As long as the site development fully implements a proposed architecture and the landscaping plan with extensive planning of trees, shrubs, ornamental grasses, including a variety of species per the landscape schedule on the plan set, proposed landscaping would serve to soften the view of substantial storage building. Seventeen, "Moderate impacts on land use plans." Again, inconsistent with land use and zoning regulations regarding town joining the Greenway Compact and adopting the Greenway Compact Program and Guides. A related moderate impact is that the proposed action is inconsistent with county land use plans, also in reference to the Duchess County Greenway Guides. Two aspects of the Greenway Guides result in these moderate impacts. So I'm at seventeen A at the bottom of page ten. Specifically, project involves construction of a large building visible from the Route ninety gateway corridor. And then it talks about moderate impacts on aesthetic resources to the top of page eleven. And, hang on a second here. Refers again to the CPU maps and it go, and the Route ninety corridor going to the northern boundary. Proposed action will have moderate impacts on scenic and aesthetic resources due to its visibility. visibility from the Gateway Corridor. And then, again, the applicant has worked with the planning boards regarding the architectural design. As long as site development fully implements the architecture and landscaping plan, um, those things would be mitigated, I'm paraphrasing. And B, in the middle of page eleven, light shining onto adjoining properties, recent revisions in the lighting plan, um, resulted in a significant reduction of hotspots in the middle of the site as well. Uh, so, that's another piece of mitigation. Number eighteen, uh, small impact on community character, uh, site redevelopment, um, with a large building. But also noting a transition from an underutilized site with two commercial operations to a redeveloped site with a total of five operating businesses. Demand for community services such as, uh, police, fire, ambulance, and related. And, a proposed access system via Pappas Lane into the sites, uh, into the site with parking areas would facilitate emergency access, um, to the new businesses. Nineteen, again, this is about community character with construction of a large building. And, it again refers to, um, the Route 9D corridor and interfering with the use or enjoyment of the recognized designated public resource inconsistency with predominant architectural scale and character. And then, um, at the end of that, the second paragraph there at the top of that page, page twelve, uh, the applicant's worked, uh, with the planning board to revise the architectural design. And as long as they fully implement the proposed architecture and landscaping plan with extensive plantings, uh, the proposed landscaping would serve to soften the view of substantial site redevelopment, including the storage building. And then, there's a list of the action not resulting in any impacts on geological features, groundwater, flooding, air, agricultural resources, historic or archaeological, open space recreation, and critical environmental areas. It also would not have impacts on human health.
Thank you.
Sure. Any other changes, questions? Typos?
Any questions? So, I have some comments that really pertain to what we've just gone through. And this is going to end up really as a question to, um, Dominic and John. So, let me see if I can get this out there. So, there are a couple of sections of the draft EAF Part II on draft neg deck, that I want to ask our attorney and engineer about that might affect whether the board should move ahead tonight with approval of these secret documents. The following issue, items were raised by planning board members at recent meetings, including the last meeting on March fourteenth. One of them was referenced in EAF Part II, page one, impact on land. Item 1D, the planning board questioned whether less than a thousand tons of material would be removed from the site during demolition and construction. The applicant discussed this at the March fourteenth meeting, indicating that some of the excavated material would be reused on-site during construction. But, the applicant did not submit cut-and-fill calculations that were requested with actual estimates of material that would be removed. The board also asked the applicant whether blasting would occur during demolition, so we've talked about this one, uh, a number of times. That pertains to EAF Part II, page eight, number fifteen, noise, um, as well, as the impact on the land one. And the applicant stated emphatically that blasting would not occur. The board indicated that a note should be added to the site plan that's clearly stating that no blasting will occur. But, such a note was not added to the revised site plans yet.
Excuse me, Chairman, just to, uh, jump in for a moment. Note forty-three identifies that no blasting is proposed.
Okay.
There's another place, what was confusing about the plans was that there's another place where there's reference to the blasting code. So, it kind of-
Yep, I mean, the note clearly states that it's not proposed and would require additional approval if it is required in the future.
All right, so that one may be covered. The other item relates to EAF Part II, page eight, number thirteen, item three F under transportation, which is the one we were talking about recently, about the potentially large impact. And includes a note that the project may also result in a large increase in the use of Pappas Lane, a private road. The draft neg deck, page eight, number twelve, states that more details will be requested from the project sponsor about the proposed improvements to Pappas Lane to convert it to the standard of a local road, et cetera, et cetera. So, these items are all discussed in the draft neg deck as well as in the EAF Part II with references to additional information and materials that the applicant will need to submit. In the neg deck, those are pages three, number one, page four, and number two, and page eight, number twelve. So, the key question really is, does the applicant need to submit revised plans and additional material that addresses the issues just mentioned before the planning board can approve the EAF Part II and a neg deck? Otherwise, is it possible that approval of the EAF Part II and neg deck without those additional materials might be considered a conditional neg deck? Which is not permitted for type-one actions in the SEACER regs? So, that's sort of a-
Mr. Chairman, I, I don't believe that this would be a conditional neg deck, you know, uh, if, uh, there are additional clarifications that have to happen as part of a plan submission. Yeah, a, as you know, the, the, you know, the adoption of a negative declaration is a step in the process. It's not preliminary approval. It's not conditional final approval. And there's an expectation here that, you know, the applicant will continue to refine the plans, uh, and address any outstanding comments, you know, as part of that, uh, process. And so, you know, the mere fact, you know, like, and even though this is a bad example because it's actually on the plan set, but, you know, the fact that the applicant could stand here and say that they've agreed not to blast on-site. And if that hadn't been on the plan set, you know, the, I, I believe firmly that the board could move forward with a negative declaration on that point alone because of the applicant's representation. And then it could have been captured in the site plan moving forward, you know, as far, you know, prior to like any time when the board would consider preliminary or conditional final approval. It's a bad example, as I said.
How about a better example of Pappas Lane? Because that's a little bit more complicated.
Yeah, in, in connection with Pappas Lane, I mean, this, this is actually very similar to the companion pet hospital, you know, is, is that they, they do have the legal right to use it. And, you know, so, i- it's, it's a bit of a difficult situation because, uh, in the sense that, you know, the board is looking for, uh, improvements to Pappas Lane when, you know, the applicant has demonstrated that they have done what they can do to a certain extent. And there's also, you know, the jurisdiction of the New York State DOT in connection with this as well, which is driving and framing, you know, the overall, uh, options that are available to both the board and the applicant. But, to answer your original question, I do not believe that because, uh, items will be forthcoming as part of this, it's, it's a conditional negative declaration. That's a different process. It's seldom used. It's most often, you know, when there's a major component that is, that is, uh, uh, subject to like jurisdiction of, say, like in different agency. And that agency has to weigh in, for instance, on whether or not like a wetlands permit might be issued by the DEC and it's discretionary and it's unclear whether that would be happening.
But, aren't there some, um, court cases in New York that have addressed, um, kind of this situation where a neg deck has been issued? I mean, it's not called a conditional neg deck, but it's, it has been interpreted by some courts as being that, a conditional neg deck, when in fact, the neg deck was based on information that hasn't been received yet.
Look, there are all sorts of legal decisions in New York State, you know? Many, many thousands a year, and you have quite disparity even amongst the various different departments of the state. You'll get a different decision on Long Island than you would get in Batavia, New York. And, you know, and there's even a crazy decision out of Liberty, you know, up in the Third Department, you know, about the fact that, uh, you know, you have to have a neg deck before you even have a public hearing on subdivision.
I've heard that, yeah.
You know, and there are certain people that follow that, and they like adopt their neg deck before they have their public hearing, and then the public comes out and they says, "What about this? What about that?" You know, and the board's like, "Well, we already adopted, uh, you know, our negative declaration." So, um, in any event, um, you know, I, I do not believe, in my professional opinion, that the items that are being requested of the applicant, uh, in this particular situation are such that it would trigger, you know, the procedural requirements of a conditional negative declaration, uh, which are purely procedural in that matter as far as that's concerned. I mean, if that's what the applicant, you know, if, if they disagree and you think that, that it should be a conditional negative declaration, then it's called a conditional negative declaration. It gets circulated, right, to all of the other agencies, and then there's a time period of thirty days that has to pass before the board takes further action. You could take that step tonight. You know, you're not at the point where you'd be adopting a preliminary approval anyway because you
Well-
haven't adopt, you haven't, uh, requested a resolution to that effect.
About this being a type-one action, which is what we classified it as.
You, my, my mistake.
You could not do a conditional neg deck on
Correct.
type-one action.
Correct. Thank you for clarifying. That's correct.
Yeah, I mean, I've, I've just returning from, um, New York Planning Federation Conference where we've had some good attorneys talking about this very issue. It started me thinking about it. So, I thought I would ask you and see what your experience has been with similar, similar cases like that.
I, all I can do is provide you the best advice that I can provide to the board.
So, let me, yeah, let me just ask, um, the applicant's point of view on that, just because I think the applicant will want to make sure that whatever we do is also completely defensible, um, going ahead into the future, so.
Sure. I mean, I agree with that statement, and I agree with everything Dominic said. And with respect to Pappas Lane and the improvements, it's not some vague improvements that we're making, right? It's to local roadway standards, and we're going to enter into an agreement that says we'll maintain it in perpetuity. And, so, we're going to, it, again, it's just not a condition. It's just what we're going to do. And it's not, the, the plans that we're going to be submitting, it's not like, "Oh, this is what we think we want to do. You have local roadway standards. That's what we're going to meet."
So, um, yeah, I thought I had to ask the question. Do board members have any, um, any questions or thoughts on that before we think about moving ahead?
No, no questions.
All right, then. So, what we'll do is, we've reviewed the EAF Part II, and we've reviewed the draft neg deck. We didn't make any revisions, I don't think, to the EAF Part II tonight, but we made a few to the draft neg deck.
I, I have one more comment on the draft neg deck.
Okay, where?
It's in a couple of different places, but I'll just, on the first page, it pops out. The fast food, uh, establishment is actually the twenty-six, twenty-six, uh, twenty-seven, twenty-six square feet. And the car wash is three thousand and forty-five square feet. So, it's just reversed.
Okay, wait a minute. Okay, so it's
Let's see, where is that?
Twenty-seven? Twenty-seven, twenty-six, fast food.
Correct, and-
And three oh four five car wash.
Correct. And so, I think that comes up a couple of places.
What paragraph does it start off in?
Dyslexic with things like that.
First paragraph on the first page, John, in the description of the-
So, it needs to be corrected everywhere?
Yes.
Okay.
There's the thirty, forty-five, and then there's the twenty-seven, twenty-six.
Oh, I can, I can search. I can search for it. I, I'm not worried about doing it right now. But, yeah, search and destroy.
Okay.
Well, you know what I mean. It just makes it more exciting.
Did you want to know the page numbers?
No.
Okay, here we go.
That's why they call it a draft.
That's right.
All right, so, um, so again, uh, in the EF Part II, we've now checked the box A. Oh, sorry, on the EF Part III, we've checked the box A, which indicates that the project will result in no significant adverse impacts on the environment, et cetera. Therefore, a neg deck is issued. So, is the board comfortable moving ahead with that, um, way of looking at it? Because if you are, I'll start asking for a motion to approve the draft EAF Parts Two and Three, et cetera. But, I'll, I'll read that.
The way it's written describes what actions will be taken, so that's, yeah, let's stick with A.
All right. So, do we have a motion to approve the draft EAF Parts Two and Three? And checking box A on page two of the EAF Part Three for a neg deck? For basis, industrial Route 9D is reviewed tonight and authorized the chair to sign?
So moved.
Felix moves it. Is there a second?
Second.
Bob seconds it. Any further discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All right. Any opposed? Any abstentions? Okay, so, we've approved the EAF Parts Two and Three. Is there a motion to approve the draft neg deck for basis industrial Route 9D as reviewed and revised tonight and authorized the chair to sign it?
So moved.
Fred moves that. Is there a second?
Second.
Felix seconds it. Any further discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All right. Any opposed? Any abstentions? That passes seven to zero. Okay, so, I think there are quite a few site plan details that the CPL memo has indicated need to be submitted. So, I won't go through them all because I think the memo does a really good job of doing that. But, I think at this point, we probably want to hold off on authorizing a draft of a preliminary. And I think what we'll, we'll have to end up doing with this project, because it's pretty complicated, is do, the first phase will be a preliminary, um, site development plan approval with the special permit approval. And then, um, you know, that will itself have quite a few conditions. But, I think, um, in order to get there, in order to authorize, um, Dominic to do a draft preliminary resolution, there's really a whole bunch of stuff that I think we're going to need to see. And I'll, I'll just ask, I'll throw it back to Liz and John, um, to see if you concur with that.
Yes.
Okay.
Could I ask what the harm would be in a preliminary draft resolution? And we, we know exactly what we need to meet. If we don't meet them, you guys don't vote on them. And if we satisfy all those requirements, then you'd be in a position to vote.
Well, I guess I'll ask you a question, Beck, then. There's a submittal date of, I forget what it is again. April twenty-fourth. That's basically a little less than two weeks. There's a huge amount of stuff in that memo, including details of the improvements to Pappas Lane, I believe. Has to be at least conceptually screened out so that we have a better idea of what's going to be going on there. And again, I don't think we need to go back through the memo and say, "Here are all the thi, each item." I just don't think it's possible to get there in that timeframe. So- in that timeframe. So, I mean, I'll ask other board members what you think, but I think, having gotten through the neg deck now and we've adopted that, I think now we need to really focus on a lot of the plan details that we've been asking and asking and asking for and we haven't gotten. This is the time to do it. And I think we really need to get all those details into the preliminary plan mode before we really feel comfortable asking our attorney to draft a resolution to that effect.
And we have, we have gone through quite a few, you know, submittals. This, this time, John asked me to clean up the tail end of the memo and not list everything that's been submitted before. So, I came up with a compressed list of all the items from all the different submittals and.
It's still real long.
I think it's doable. I think it's very possible to, I don't, I don't, whatever the timeline, that's not of concern. I think it's very possible to provide all this information. And especially with the encouragement of the board just having adopted a neg deck. You know, a lot of good feedback from, from this planning board and, and the offline consultation, is that still authorized?
Sure. Yeah, I think we have previously authorized it, so.
If we wanted to work on some of those agreements, am I authorized to speak with Dominic?
Yeah, I think we, the basis has been attorney to attorney and engineers to engineers. And if there's going to be a mix, then attorney should be present from both sides, if at all.
Okay, just wanted to clarify.
Yeah, but that's fine.
Okay.
The question is, can you get it done?
My team is shaking their head yes.
They can get it done. I just am skeptical that the board should authorize the resolution to be ready for the May meeting.
Well, what I would tell you, if after a week of work, I see that my guys aren't going to get it done, I'll call Dominic and tell him not to start working on it. To avoid the work, I mean, because I think we can, I think we can get it done.
Hey, the guy behind you wants it done.
I know, I know he does.
There's only a few new comments. A lot of them are repeats.
Yes, sir.
Anthony Scavell from Basis, can I just ask one thing about Pappas Lane? We have no problem voluntarily improving it to a DOT standard, right? But we don't own, we will not own the whole lane, right?
Wait, just, just to be clear, no, I, in my memorandum, I never mentioned DOT standards. I was talking about the local, yeah.
We could say DOT fast.
And it specifically says in the comment, modified.
Okay.
But coming as close as possible to it and acknowledging there isn't room for sidewalks, that I can see.
Yeah, so, but I'm just saying, wouldn't you want for us to just say in an agreement that we'll do that and then work with the neighbor to try to get his side done as well? That's what I was just asking.
Well, I mean, ultimately, however, however you collaborate with your, you know, I guess it would be landlord or whatever, however you collaborate with your other partners in this, ultimately, the board needs the record on the plans of what it will ultimately be. And that's why I suggested an existing detail and a proposed detail, et cetera. I kind of gave a, a nice, you know, lineup of what we need.
Yeah, and again, this is a preliminary plan phase that we're at right now, so, I mean, it's not going to be all the final engineering details.
Yeah, I'm, I just want to give you complete roads. That's what I was trying to figure out. So, the complete road's going to be a little bit, we're going to have to make a deal with the neighbor no matter what because it's, some of it's on his property, it looks like. Yeah.
Yeah.
That's the only thing I was worried about, sir.
I mean, you know, I mean, I don't want to be too bold here, but I think that any improvement to Pappas Lane is going to benefit people, everybody using it, including whoever's owning it, so.
Did you have a question?
Yeah, I did have a question about the way he mentioned that. When he says his side of the road, what are we talking about? Because if we're only talking one side of the road.
The property line goes right through the.
Isn't right in the middle? So, then what happens to the other side? The other people don't want to do anything.
That's not, that's not the planning board's problem.
And that's, that's, that's why we've been repeatedly asking to see details of what that road is going to look like.
Well, there's no guarantee that the other half of the road's going to be fixed.
That's my question. Okay, here's my question.
That's a problem.
If you're going to have that many trucks coming and going, I think.
Here's my question. Okay. Talking about the two sides of the road now, right? We're saying one side belongs to whatever heritage, right? I think they took it over. Is that the bank side?
Correct.
Right? If they don't agree to anything, I figured they probably would, but if they don't, then what are we going to do with that road? Because you can't just improve one side of it because your traffic's going to be going in and out of both sides and we need both sides to be improved, right?
Yep, we understand. Pappas Lane currently is being accessed. The property line is shown right here. Splits it almost down the middle.
Right.
So, we control the eastern side, or sorry, the western side. The bank controls the eastern side. I don't see any reason why the bank would object to us improving their portion of the road, but we understand.
But that's the question I'm asking.
But we understand that would be required as part of this site functioning properly.
That was my question, though. Are you going to improve their side also?
That's the plan, correct.
Okay.
Yeah, every.
Okay, no, no, because the way you said it made it sound like.
No, the light gray, the light gray hatch you see here is the proposed edge of asphalt, which we're extending beyond the current weather of Pappas Lane.
Yeah, they got.
I'm fine with that. I'm fine.
And as, as the discussion also included, the improvements and maintenance, so that's the other end of it that we'll need to work on. And, you know, if there are any kind of maintenance agreements necessary as legal documents for it, that, that can certainly be reserved for the final plan approval phase, but it's still part of the equation.
Hi, Christopher Michalak, SGW Architects. Just one quick note. There is a full curb in gut, well, there's a full curb on the bank side all the way back to this point that has already been improved, improved when that bank went in. So, what we're doing is finishing our side and fixing, you know, there's maybe 20 feet of curb left before the property line. That needs to get fixed, so.
I've driven a road.
Yeah, so all of this, on the entire north side of Pappas, has already got a curb on it. So, we're just finishing the other side. So, any agreement would be literally just repaving up to their curb, just to clarify.
Okay. So, I think that will do it for tonight.
You need a motion to?
No.
No, we're not going to do another motion and let somebody feel as they want to.
I'm good.
Okay.
Thank you very much for your time. As always, appreciate you.
Thank you.
Okay, so I'm going to say, wait for Debbie's edits. Yeah, because then what all did?
So, we've got one more major item left to get through tonight. All right, so we're going to keep going, all right? Even though we lost temporarily a couple of members, that's okay.
We'll get them back.
Yep. So, the next and last item tonight is Fishville Self-Storage Route 9D Site Development Plan and Special Use Permit. Board to discuss the draft environmental impact statement, DEIS, submitted by the applicant's representative on March 27, 2024. So, I'll ask the applicant team to come up. You were starting to come up, but we'll just ask you to kind of give whatever description you feel able and willing to give tonight on what went into putting together the DEIS and, you know, a little bit, just roughly about the contents of it.
Sure. Good evening, Aaron Werner, AKRF. Nice to see everybody. We've been gone for a few months. We've been busy.
Yeah, good to see you.
So, yes, we did put together the DEIS pursuant to the scoping document submitted on March 27. As you know, your first step is to determine if it's complete against the adopted scope. So, there is a 45-day clock for that. We would request that it start on the 27th of March, but that's for you to decide. I can go through the contents briefly on the document just to refresh your memory on it. We covered land use zoning and community plans, consistency with community character, aesthetics, open space and recreation. We have transportation and traffic chapter, which interplays heavily with a very large traffic study that was included in the appendices. We looked at five alternatives that were required by the scope. And just so you, everyone probably received a hard copy, but I just wanted to go through just some intricacies of the appendices so you understand why we did things a certain way, just to save paper here and there. So, Appendix A is all the SEGA documents to date, right? The scope that was adopted, the positive declaration, FEIF Parts 1 through 3. Appendix B was all the comments received on the draft scope. Appendix C, you requested that we have all submissions that were made on the project dating back to 2021. So, there's a lot of information there, a lot of papers. So, what we decided to do and we consulted with Debbie and Liz about this was, the applicant's legal counsel, Cuddy and Fader, set up an FTP site where they dropped all that material. So, the appendices and the DEIS, the page, the cover page of that appendix has a link to that FTP site with username and password information to be able to get in there and get those documents. So, we didn't print those all out. And with the traffic study, similarly, a large amount of it was the crash history report, which we did not print in the printed copy because it was like 2,000 pages, but it's definitely, it's part of the USB drive that was included in all your binders. So, the electronic version has, is the complete traffic study. So, yeah, in our opinion, you know, we believe that we did meet all the requirements of that scope, so we would ask that, you know, we get some feedback on that in the required 45-day timeframe and we look forward to discussing that further.
Thank you. All right. Well, why don't we ask Liz Axelson and Dominic Cordisco sort of to work together as a team to give us a, kind of a brief idea of the process that the board's going to, you know, need to go through with this environmental impact statement, especially the early stages from today on, basically up through presumably acceptance at some point of.
Sure. From my perspective, the SEGA regulations, you know, are in connection with a proposed draft environmental impact statement, is the board is looking at the document and ultimately determining whether or not the document is acceptable to commence public review. And so, you know, there are statements, there are mitigation measures that are proposed, there are items that are, you know, analysis that's provided by the applicant, and the board may or may not agree with what is being proposed. But the purpose of the board's review at this particular stage is to review the document as, in connection with reviewing it against the adopted scope for this project that you went through and to ensure a few things. One is, is that they addressed everything that they were supposed to address in scope and whether or not the document is presented in a way that it would be ready and digestible by the public and other agencies in order to get to that point. The board has 45 days from the submission of this document to provide either comments to the applicant or deem it ready for the commencement of public review. So, at this meeting, you know, you're essentially acknowledging receipt of that document. My suggestion would be that for the May meeting, that you have, you know, comments from your consultants as well as any comments from the board members yourselves based on your review. And then the matter should be placed on an agenda for the May meeting so that a detailed discussion can be had. If there are revisions that are required to the document, then the applicant at that time should be given clear guidance as to what those revisions are. Unless you feel that there's more time that is necessary, you're of course always free to ask the applicant for more time as part of that review. But I think that that would depend on your review, the status of your review at the May meeting rather than now, you know, since the document's just been submitted.
So.
You want to add something to that, Liz?
Not a whole lot. That was great summary. The only thing I was going to do is touch on the process so far, but I don't know that we really need, do we need to do that?
I just like, very, very brief.
Okay, I'll do it in bullet points. So, so basically, the planning board has been reviewing this project site plan per the code and also per State Environmental Quality Review Act. And in the early project review, there were comments issued and a couple rounds of review. And then on August 17, a secret determination of positive, positive declaration was issued and it required preparation of the DEIS that's just recently been submitted. The draft scoping outline was prepared and that scoping, scoping session was held on October 12. And then ultimately, the scope was revised and circulated, adopted by the board and circulated to agencies. And it was in the environmental, sent to the environmental notice bulletin on October 14. As I said, the scoping session was held on October 12. And so, there were public and agency comments then. And then a revised scoping outline was adopted by the planning board on November 9, 2023. And the adopted final scope was then made available to the public and agencies and it was circulated and published in the ENB. And I have begun my review of the DEIS. I've been working on it from pretty much the day I got it. And I, I can't foresee an issue with the timeline. I've already alerted our traffic engineer to have a look at his portions of the DEIS, so he's aware of the timeline. And we're hoping to confer with each other the end of next week, see where we're at and get going on, on writing comments the week after that. So, I'm not going to, I'm going to try to prepare draft comments. And I suppose, Jonathan, you'll take a look at those. And, and I think it would be wise, if possible, to issue the draft comments, if possible, a week and a half to two weeks before the next planning board meeting.
Yeah.
So, there's some time to get ready for that discussion. Anyway, that's, that's my rundown. I don't know that there's anything else. We've had the rundown on the timeline. Dominic and.
Do board members have any specific questions about the process going forward? It's really, it's a pretty straightforward process, but a very lengthy and complex document to go through. But, you know, it looks very well organized, so it definitely helps and makes it easier. But it will take some time. And I, too, have started going through it, but there's a lot to go through. So, I mean, I think at the May 9 meeting, as Dominic was suggesting, the board should be, you know, prepared to determine whether to accept the DEIS as adequate and whether it's, you know, in good shape to commence public review. And if so, then, you know, we, we probably would ask for collaboration between CPL and Dominic to put together a resolution to that effect. If it's a little bit more complicated than that and if there's a consensus of the board that the DEIS is not adequate yet for public review, then we're going to need to identify in writing specifically what those deficiency are. in writing specifically what those deficiencies are. So here's a suggested resolution, which you can see what you think if you want to move it or alter it, but how about something like this? Motion to authorize our planning board attorney and planning board's consultants at CPL to coordinate in making a recommendation to the planning board on either A, determining whether to accept the DEIS as adequate with respect to its scope and content for the purpose of commencing public review, and if so, whether and when a public hearing on the DEIS should be held, or alternatively, determining whether the DEIS is inadequate, identifying the deficiencies, and in either case, providing an appropriate draft resolution for the board's consideration at the May 9, 2024 meeting. So does that sound like a reasonable draft resolution? I mean, a motion to move forward?
Certainly.
Would someone like to move that?
When do we get the chance to go through the details of the DEIS and...
May 9.
Make sure that they take into consideration the write-in comments that we've received dated October 2023.
Well, more particularly, take into the consideration the scoping document...
Right.
Which actually, I mean, I guess you could say that the scoping document also include, and the EIS also includes the public comments that were made on that scoping document.
So that's next month?
That would be the May 9 meeting, yes.
And before that time, you'll have a memorandum, whatever review memorandum I have. I'm going to try to get that out a week to, a week and a half before the meeting, so...
And meanwhile, I think that...
Or sooner if I can.
I think that includes all members taking a good, hard read through the document so that when our consultant's recommendation comes to us, you'll have a pretty good feeling for what will be ahead of us for the May 9 meeting.
So our review shouldn't just be focused on the content, but of also making sure that we feel that the document is set up in a way that addresses everything in the scope. So it's twofold, one, making sure that they're doing everything we ask them to, and obviously we should be continuously reviewing for content.
Yeah, yeah, go ahead, but I, I mean, I think that's basically right, but it's a little bit more complicated than that.
I think if you have, in your review, if you have substantive comments that are to the content, and if you disagree with analysis methodology or finding, reserve that for the DEIS comment period, which happens after its completeness determination is made, right? There's a 60-day public comment period, which also applies to the lead agency to comment on the document substantively. So it's sure, you can, sure, you can, you know, note those and maybe keep them in your back pocket, but for completeness review, it's, did we hit on the scope requirements? Did we cover every piece of methodology that was asked for in the scope? And is it readable, you know, understandable format presented in a way that is digestible, as you said? That's really the, that's the focus of the completeness review, right? And that's a 45-day timeframe, and...
Yes.
That ends on May 11, based on the March 27 submission date.
I guess that was what I was getting at, really, making sure that everything is there was the primary focus at this point.
Yeah.
Any content stuff, we should just be kind of keeping off to the side, I guess. Unless it has to do with the scope.
Yeah, and, I mean, also, I mean, there will, there will be certain ways that sections have been presented by the applicants, preparing of the EIS, that may not be in exact agreement with what the planning board is thinking on certain things, but again, that's, that's not what we, at this point, need to determine. But whether, by looking at the scoping document, everything is in the EIS that was supposed to be in there, not necessarily exactly how it is phrased. There will be some, some things that involve methodology, like, you know, certainly the updated traffic study involves methodology. That's pretty straightforward, and hopefully we'll get some good feedback from our CPL traffic engineer, as an example.
And also, I mean, during this time, it'll, it'll be CPL reviewing it, the traffic engineer and I, we'll be doing our review, we'll be putting our comments together under normal circumstances, when we weren't in the middle of an EIS review, offline consultation. I think we've done some of that along the way. At this particular point, though, this is the time to do that.
Right. And then later in the process, and I mean, if you want to talk about the end of the process, which would be a final environmental impact statement, that's where the draft environmental impact statement begins to get converted into a document that is the planning board's document, so to speak. So Dominic, you want to...
Yeah, no, that's exactly right, and actually, it's, it's conveyed even in the language of SEAGAR, because there's different actions that happen. For the DEIS, you accept it as being ready for public review, but when an FEIS is prepared, the board adopts it, and the FEIS becomes the board's document, because that's at the point when you say, yes, this is enough, like, you know, for all these different various levels of, of the impacts and mitigation measures that are proposed, this is enough or not enough, you know, but you get to say that at that particular stage. So I think to answer some of your questions that you're driving at earlier, as terms of like getting into the detail, right now, what the board is focused on is whether or not there's enough information that's been presented for it to go to the next step, which is a public hearing, and also to be circulated to all the other agencies as well.
And when we, once we, the board does accept the DEIS as adequate, whether that's going to be May 9 or some other time, based on input that there are certain deficiencies in it, but once we do accept it as complete and adequate, we'll then need to set a date for the public hearing, and there, I know there are certain SEAGAR timeframes for when the hearing should be held, if you do have a hearing, but...
It's like trying to figure out the date of Easter.
Yeah, and we won't, we won't know that until really, you know...
That is good. That's good.
It's like trying to predict whether the solar eclipse will be visible...
Yes.
...through the clouds or not.
Yes, there's a number of different factors in terms of like the length of time that has to be provided to the public, the notice, the amount of time for public comment, they are all kind of different factors that have to be considered in scheduling that public hearing, and also thinking about written public comment, and written public comment is required as part of that process.
And just from my standpoint, the, the first round of review that I'm going to do is just going to be about completeness. I'm not going to get into substantive comments in the, in the first review that you're going to see.
Right.
Okay, so I read a proposed motion. You want me to reread it, and then somebody could move it, or do you want to make one up?
I'll tell you what, I'll move it.
All right, I'll reread it, and then you can see. I know Fred wants to move it, but, so the motion is to authorize our planning board attorney and planning board's consultants at CPL to coordinate in making a recommendation of the planning board on either A, determining whether to accept the DEIS as adequate with respect to its scope and content for the purpose of commencing public review, and if so, whether and when a public hearing on the DEIS should be held, or alternatively, B, determining whether the DEIS is inadequate, identifying the deficiencies, and in either case, providing an appropriate draft resolution for the board's consideration at the May 9, 2024 meeting. Would someone like to move that?
I already did. Can I make a motion?
Fred makes the motion now.
I'll second.
Felix seconds it.
I've got two Fred movements in a second.
Anyway, is there any further discussion?
No.
In favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? Okay, so that passes. Now, one further question. There's not really a specific timeframe for this, but at some point, the board's going to need to request input from the building inspector on, and this is simply the building inspector's input, as the code requires...
This is in connection with the special permit.
In connection with the special permit on whether the proposed self-storage use is substantially similar to other uses listed in the RB Restricted Business District and consistent with the stated purposes of the RB District pursuant to Section 150-19B of the Town Official Code. So, I mean, we don't have to do that tonight, but we should think about somewhere during this EIS process.
We had, if I may, we had touched on it previously, and the advice that I had given at that time was is that when the document is ready for a public hearing, that it should, you know, it should be preferred to the building inspector at that time for his comments at that stage.
So that it would probably be a good idea to get his comment prior to, or at least by the public hearing.
Correct.
Okay. All right.
So, Mr. Chairman, just to be clear, so if we feel that the DEIS is fine at our May meeting, can we then ask, is that what we're saying at that point, or when will we do the public hearing?
Yes, so if, you know, theoretically, if the board is satisfied with the document at the May meeting, or satisfied with, say, minor revisions that need to be made, then those revisions would be made, and the notice would be prepared of, it's called a notice of, of completion of the DEIS, and it would be circulated, the document has to be physically circulated to all the various different agencies, and then the public hearing would be held. It depends on the timing of the publication of the notice, but it's possible that the public hearing could be held, at least opened, you know, at the June meeting. There's also a minimum of like 60-day period for, for the document, document to be considered, you know, by the public and by the agencies at that time, so you have to factor that into as to like when you would potentially close public hearing, and whether it would be, you know, and then as well as you have a minimum 10-day written public comment period as well, you know, which can also be extended longer if necessary.
So you're telling, you're saying that we don't not give it to the building inspector until after...
Until it's ready to get the public hearing, is my recommendation, because the document at that point, you know, it, it matches up to the scope, it, it's been, the board is basically identifying the fact that the document is ready for the public to comment on it, the other agencies to comment on it, and including the building inspector at that time.
He's an agency.
Correct.
But is the building inspector's answer a major factor?
No, not in this case. This is not a determination this time. This is one of the few times when we are required to seek the building inspector's zoning administrators' input, not determination or anything formal as we usually get. That's what makes this Section 150-19B unusual and different, one of many things about it that is different and unusual in my mind, but we have it, and...
There it is.
So I would just say, Mr. Chairman, I think if the other board members, I think we all need to start thinking about the 150-19B as we go forward, because we do have the DEIS in front of us, we have most of the things that we would need to think if this is substantially similar, you know, so I think it's something we need to start thinking about so that we're not behind the eight ball later on. I think we, and of course, we don't have to make any decisions until after we go through the public hearing and all, but I think we need to start at least thinking, putting it in our heads, because it's an important part of this project that needs to be addressed at some point, right?
Yes.
Yes.
I agree.
I mean, it is an essential aspect of this particular application. It is a special use permit, but it's a special, special use.
Very special.
Yes.
So this 45-day period that we're currently in is taken from the date of the...
Submission.
...of the EIS, which would be March 27, which would make the 45 days May 11?
Yes.
So that gives us, so that gives us the May meeting?
Yes.
Okay, I just want to make sure we're all, the dates.
Somebody counted it out.
And just to be clear, there's no default approvals in this context? You know, you certainly don't want to be unduly dilatory, you know, where you're, you know, potentially delaying, you know, a response, but I'm sure that, you know, any kind of reviewing court would look at the fact that, you know, your May meeting, you know, if it fell like two days after that 45-day period and you provide comments, it's...
And the meeting was two days later.
It's not, you know, correct, you know? I mean, I once in a town that I won't name, you know, had a scoping session, they're supposed to be done within 60 days, and after like 120 days, you know, the board, you know, and, and they just, yeah, and they just, they just kept going, and, you know, at that point, you're like, well, you guys are just delaying this, you know, for whatever reason.
Let's get it done.
Yes.
All right.
But it's not as if it becomes complete by default, you know, within those 45 days.
Good to understand that. Thank you.
Of course, I'm happy, happy to. This is the kind of stuff that puts my wife to sleep at night.
You say that a lot.
Yes, yes, and I'm afraid I'm putting you guys to sleep.
I wonder if it works with babies.
I'm, I'm listening to every word you're saying, Dominic.
Oh, my goodness, my goodness, now, now I'm frightened.
Me, too.
Yeah, it wasn't so funny.
So any other questions or thoughts?
No.
All right.
We covered all the steps.
Well, thank you for sitting here and allowing us to talk about all this, and thank you for your input. So we look forward to getting back together on May 9 and going through it all.
Right, gentlemen?
So, let's see, before everyone leaves, I just wanted to, I just wanted to offer my congratulations to Felix and Ravi, who are reappointed by the town board to new four-year terms as full planning board members.
Thank you.
And, yep.
Back to training.
And also to Kevin and BJ, who were reappointed to one-year terms as alternate members. And I understand that all four of those members have signed their oath of office, so we're in good shape.
They haven't kicked me off yet, huh? They left last year.
So any other, yeah, a motion or any other things that board members want to bring up?
Let's make a motion.
And I'll second it.
Who would like to make a motion to adjourn?
Some moved. Come on, Fred.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
All right. Could everyone enjoy this all?